Let us come to order. Renee, would you call the roll, please?
Board member Denny?
Here.
Board member General Core?
Here.
Board member Miller?
Here.
Vice chairperson Price?
Here.
Chairperson Russell?
Here.
Board member Sharp?
Here.
Board member Stroud?
Board members, thank you for being here. We appreciate your service. We don't tell you that often enough. But we do. We appreciate you. This is one of the better boards we've ever had. Without further ado then, let's take the next order of business and look at approval of the minutes for February 28th. And I'll just ask, do you have those minutes? Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we approve the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second and for approval. Renee, would you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry, who's second?
I did.
Thank you. Board member Denny?
Four.
Board member General Core?
For the motion.
Board member Miller?
Four.
Vice chairperson Price?
For the motion.
Chairperson Russell?
Four.
Board member Sharp?
For the motion.
Board member Stroud?
I'm getting the homework out of the way.
All ready.
Usually I forget to sign those things at the end of the meeting. They're signed. All right, we've done the approval of the minutes and we're going to move into the item two on the agenda. Continuing in discussion on allowing exception to the current height requirements for certain rooftop uses and provide staff direction for a future code revision if necessary. It's going to be an interesting subject and I think we've got some folks here that want to give us information, opinions otherwise. And we'll just work it and see where we go. We do not have to make a decision tonight. We're continuing to investigate this and hear information and think about it. I took the data pack that we have and read through all the good collection of data that we have about height regulations and additional impertinences on rooftops and different cities that have done this or want to do it. And we have the information about their approach. I walked around, I thought about it, and I thought about it. And we've got all this information about how to write a statute to regulate the rooftop use and what's allowed. But I guess what I want to... What I came down to is how are we going to do this? How will the hotels implement it? How will we reach agreement? And what will be allowed and how high is it going to be? And those are the things we're going to talk about. I hope the board members will be very aggressive about asking your questions tonight. We want to get a lot of information. It looks like we have a good group of people here that want to address it. But we'll turn it over to the staff and let them take us through the approach. Go ahead, Kyle.
Hey, good evening, everyone. It's been too long. Just to briefly recap the meeting that we had back in February, we talked about the rooftop uses and also the live work land use regulations. I think what ultimately came out of it was that we should have a night like tonight where people, developers and members of the community, people who will be impacted by this can come and speak and discuss and ask questions and, you know, we can have kind of a conversation about the best way to do this, how we want to do it. So that's the purpose of tonight is to kind of discuss it and go after it, sort of like we did the parking requirements and hopefully come up with something that we can bring back to you guys. So my slides tonight are a little repetitive from last time, but I think it's probably useful to kind of just go over it again and then we can, depending on how you want to do it, either discuss and then call people up or call people up after. We can kind of decide as we go. But yeah, I can go to the next slide, please, Renee.
Have you got slides?
Yes, I do. Is it not on your screen?
Okay, well, take us through what you have. So we're looking at... What are we looking at here?
So this is just a cool picture of the city, I think. But in general, this is kind of a rehash of last time, but just to kind of go into it again, we've had a lot of interest in doing these rooftop uses, rooftop observation decks, restaurants and bars, rooftop gardens, really a lot of different, a variety of uses that have come from not only commercial, but a few residential properties have asked too, but mainly commercial. And so we've talked about it between staff and... This actually is addressed in the most recent International Building Code. They have an article, I don't know if it's their journal or something, but they have a whole article that discusses it and how it's being addressed in the International Building Code. So it's being addressed there, it's being addressed by Canaveral Fire Rescue. They have, you know, guidelines and they're comfortable with it. So really where we hit the snag is current city code requires that, you know, let's just say 45 feet, just to keep it simple, 45 feet allowed by right. There are limit... There are height exceptions, things like water tanks, solar panels, elevator equipment, not intended for human occupancy. And that's really the important part, is it not intended for human occupancy? Because that makes it very, not very hard, but impossible to do, you know, an area of refuge. So an elevator goes up to this rooftop, you know, obviously when it opens, you're not just going to open onto the open air, so you need an area of refuge, I believe is what it's called. And that's intended for human occupancy. So that is not included in the height exceptions. So that's kind of where we said, well, we can't really allow this. But we've had so much interest and Cape Canaveral really is one of the best places you could do it. We have such a unique position where we can watch these rocket launches. And I think the next slide actually has a picture for... Nope, it's not this one. But pretty soon, there's a really cool picture. So a couple of the approaches that we discussed last week. Well, first, do you guys have anything to add at this point? So a couple of different options we discussed last week. Adding the height of it... So these are a couple of ideas that we can kind of bandy about, but adding the height of an elevator lobby or other accessibility options as necessary for ADA compliance to serve as a rooftop use. Adding language to permit additional height for a rooftop use specifically and, you know, have it like with height above 45 feet in the overlay is permitted with approval from the Community Appearance Board. You know, we could talk about doing something similar to that or you guys leave the code as is. And that obviously would mean we would have to work within the current guidelines. So say, you know, you have a six-story hotel, you're going to have to do a step back and have the bar or restaurant in that. So, you know, obviously we have to have the option of not doing it. But I think we want to kind of try to work with this. Can you go to the next slide, please? Oh, I'm sorry, that's Hotel Melby, I believe. Additional considerations, we may want to limit the locations or land use classifications, so limit it to either the overlay district or commercial zoning classifications. Certain conditions, such as, we talked about last time, rooftop restaurants and bars open to the general public, requiring that or requesting that. And then kind of an obvious one, but don't want it to be overlooked, all structures on the rooftop, such as shade canopies, seating areas, et cetera, need to be properly permitted to ensure wind speeds can be withstood in addition to other factors. It's kind of a no-brainer, but wanted to include it anyway. Can you go to the next slide, please? So this is the picture from the northernmost hotel currently under construction. So, I mean, it's probably about a little over 65 feet or 65 feet exactly, just to give you an idea of the type of view that one would have. It's a very nice picture. Then I went on the roof of, can never remember which hotel it is, those twin hotels that were built relatively recently. And I went on the roof for a drone demonstration or they were doing, you know, taking pictures. And it was really incredible. So like I said, we have a very unique opportunity here. Obviously, whatever we talk about, we're going to have to really discuss and make sure that it's what we want to do and it can be, you know, it's been done for or, you know, whatever, legally defensible, all that. So, yeah, I mean, that's really, at this point, all I have. If you guys want to discuss it a little bit and then call people up or call people up and then discuss.
I think what we'd like to do is talk it among ourselves here a little bit, some ideas around, and then include the audience in, have them come up and interchange with us and do it that way.
Great.
And it doesn't look like we have an enormous crowd, so we'll operate sort of easy, not too formal. We'll get as formal as we need to, depending on how rowdy everybody wants to get. But what I came down to is, you know, you could go up to 65 feet with the proper permissions or you could go use your existing 45 and use the existing rooftop with mods and engineering, but you got to have the elevator and the stairwell entrance and exit and the fencing around the rooftop and all that. And then do you allow a restaurant or you just say, hey, you want to come up, watch the launches, maybe have a beverage service, ooh and ah, and talk a little bit and leave? It doesn't have to be one of those places that is really full of service. That's one approach. I'm neither for or against that, I'm just throwing it out. Give us something to talk about. Do you allow these uses in existing hotels? If they come in, they get the opportunity to come in and modify the roof? If you modify an existing roof to do that, you've got some work to do, some engineering mods. That could be pretty hefty. It depends on, do you really want to do it? What's in it for you? How much profit can I make? I don't see a lot of profit in rooftop viewing, but that's just me. I don't know the business. Willing to listen to any ideas. So I thought I'd throw those out and ask you, Nancy, do you have any thoughts or questions you want to throw on the table for us?
Well, I would like to get some more information. I had a couple of things. I guess, I think in my mind, right now, I think it should be in the overlay district. I think that that would be the right spot for these places to be. And I do think it should be open to the public, not something that, you know, if you're doing a private hotel or a private something. I think it should be open to the public and more people could use it.
And if it's open to the public, then the hotel or
Right.
...high-rise structure has to provide parking or bicycle space or walk-in space or Uber drop-off. I don't know how you do that.
Yeah, I know. Well, we're back to with the parking here. We're in such a bind anyway that I'm convinced people just have to learn to use Uber and...
If it is a restaurant, they don't need to provide any parking, so. And I also actually do want to clarify, Lamar, what you said reminded me. Many of the people here tonight are with hotels that are currently under construction and they've provided engineering already in the case that this is approved. So that just gives some context here. So the Hilton Garden Inn and the, which is on Imperial Avenue, and the Hyatt, which is the northernmost, pretty much right when you're driving in. I'm sure everyone's seen it.
Yeah, we'll have some good questions.
Yeah.
How about you, John? You got anything?
Well, I just want to start out by saying that I'm really in favor of rooftop usage and I think it should be... You made mention of it being temporary usage. In my mind, I think it could be full-time usage for restaurants, bars, hotels. In terms of the considerations for rooftop development, you know, there are things that other communities have dealt with in terms of elevator height, parapet walls, those kinds of things, and I think we can work with all that stuff. Certainly, public parking is going to be a concern and an issue, but that's not really our issue, it's the developer's issue, should be. And so I'm really looking forward to see what you folks have to say because I think it's exciting. I think we can make a lot out of this.
I've got this idea that if we... If it's open to the public, and it should be, they have to have a place to come or how to get there. You know, we dealt with the parking around the bars and pubs and we asked the pub owners and bar owners to come in and talk with us. And they told us that they really didn't need parking regulations. Their customer, they can walk in, they can use Uber, they can bicycle, or they can drive their car and hope to find a place, and if they don't, then they go somewhere else. I mean, it just... So they recommended really to let it solve itself. So we agreed to recommend that to council and the council decided to go with it, all the while broadcasting that this may be a temporary, we may drive this around temporarily to see how it works. But we reserve the right to come back and visit it. And so far, it seems to be working. I've heard no other adverse feedback. So let the owner solve it, brought us the solution, our neighbors worked with it. So maybe that's a way to approach this, let hotels have some sort of... Customer, you can come, you're welcome, but you can find your own place to park or don't park or ride in or bicycle in. So anyway, there are different ways to approach it. Throw that out for your thinking. Anything else, John? You're good. How about you, Susan?
Well, I also agree that it should be open to the public. I think that we should have, if somebody wants to modify their existing hotel per our guidelines, I think we should let people modify it. And then, sorry, Nancy, I don't agree that it has to be only in the overlay district. I think there's a lot of other properties around here.
I don't take it personally.
Okay. But I think it would do good. So I think it's exciting and I think we can get through it all and I think we should go for it.
Well, we have a good group of people here that can agree to disagree, so we're good at that. Okay, anything else, Susan?
No, I'm good.
How about you, Steve?
This is one of the hottest new types of enjoyment around the nation now, especially through the southeast. This is happening everywhere. They're very successful in most places if implemented the right way. I think we are an obvious choice to have this type of element into our community. Everyone keeps talking about the hotels, but it's not only the hotels that can benefit from this.
Could be the condos.
It's not only restaurants and bars. We're looking at a lot of properties here that have the mixed use that we're going to be dealing with soon. And elements of this sort to top off the entertainment and social aspect of those types of projects is just paramount for a developer to have in his satchel of goods when he wants to make a successful project. There's obviously a few things that need to be worried about, structural integrity, zoning permits that you have to work through to make sure that it's just done the right way.
Height limitations.
Height limitations.
Always.
Access and egress, utilities and services, design, aesthetics, and for the developer, cost and return on investments. Most of this, though, is their problem, not ours.
I fail to see the return on investment, a significant return on investment. But see, I'm not a businessman, that's why I'm not in business. And if there is a good return...
But you like a good meal and a good drink.
To go for it.
Yeah. That's their problem as well.
They know that business.
If they fail, there's still a place for us to go up there and watch the launch.
Right.
I think, you know, let them win. I'm all for them winning. So those are... That's kind of the general concept I have is we're just sitting waiting for this. We just have to do it the right way. I keep going back to, there's more than just this. There's a lot of big stuff coming our way in these mixed-use projects. And if we figure this element out, it's going to make all those other pieces and parts work out and we're going to have more people coming to us saying, yeah, maybe I will give that a shot because I do have this element. I've got five of the nine things I need to have. So let's give them a shot.
All right.
See what they can do.
We agree to dig around the fern and see what we can cultivate.
Yeah.
How about you, Michael?
Well, I agree with what everybody else has said, too. I'm excited about this because I agree with you that with our mixed use coming into play here, this is just going to add to that. And McInnes, we're a very unique place. I think it should be open to the public and I think it should, the existing buildings should be able to benefit from this also.
I want to hear from the existing hotels, how they would do it with an existing hotel. I mean, what, how they would go about it. That's going to be a piece of work, to take an existing roof and add what you've got to have to have foot traffic and elevators and...
And I agree that we've got to do it the right way.
Right. We want to do it the right way. How about you, Suzy?
Hey, I'm all for the idea. I think it's a great idea. Anything new that's coming to town has the ability to be able to do this in their early engineering phases. I'm in support of any adjustments we might consider to make to get the right height so that these things can be done. But my concern is, is I think this is a bridge too far for existing hotels. Just the laundry list of things that have to be studied, starting off with engineering reviews. Can the structure support what it needs, what we need to be able to put that up on the roof? We've got to have stairwells, we've got to have restrooms at the top, the elevator has to run that far. These existing hotels have a lot of equipment that's already up there that doesn't provide for the space to be able to do this. I would love for somebody in this room to come to us and say, hey, I've got this idea and I think this is what we can do to make this work, but there's a lot of stuff to be considered. You're saying, you know, fire... I'm in the fire protection industry. I've been on a lot of roofs, I've done a lot of flow testing. That's the easiest part, getting the fire protection up there to set something up like this. But man, I think about the sanitary, the electrical that you're going to need up there. There's just a whole host of engineering challenges to be able to do that. Somebody that's building right now, that's already got some plans, got some engineering, I think this is a fantastic idea and I'll support it.
I'm interested to hear whether the hotels will take... You know, you've got to have the 150 units, so... And everybody says, well, it takes all the stories I've got. I don't have that spare story to allocate to rooftop. So then I'd have to use a fifth, have five stories and a six-story to be rooftop.
Yeah.
Or you're going to have to give me a gimme, a real gimme, to go higher. So, yeah, we're going to talk about all that. It's not going to be simple, but we'll figure out how. This area has a lot of good engineers.
One other thing I wanted to bring up was we talked about the public access to it. I've been on properties and I know a lot of people have been too, where you have access control systems that are part of the elevator and that's what allows you to get to the roof. As a hotelier, I would believe that you want some kind of control, even though we're saying public be allowed to be able to go to these amenities on the rooftop. I believe the hotelier still needs a level of control so he knows who's going up there and has everybody gotten off that roof at the end of the evening and such. So there are ways to work with that.
That's right.
There's simple solutions to it.
They can designate lunch day stewards and to direct traffic and give access and directions and, yeah.
Temporary access cards, just, you know, check in, check out. But it is a solvable situation.
Yeah. Well, okay. I'll go back and forth here one more time, see if anybody wants to add anything before we invite their, our visitors, our public in to educate us.
Can I say something?
Sure.
As we move forward on this, do we need to have the board agree that we all would like this to happen if we can work our way through all these challenges?
Well, okay.
Can we do something as simple as that, say, we want this to happen?
I have heard that we want it to happen, that we're all in accordance, but if you'd like to have it in the form of a motion on record, that's easy.
I don't see anything wrong with that. So it's a baseline we've started. We've got this, we want it, now let's work through it.
Okay, we'll craft a motion for us and we'll put it on record.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the addition and/or new construction of a rooftop amenity with various approved uses in our community.
Okay, do we...
And you can do a better job than that than I can.
That's a complicated... Look, let me put it this way. If you're going to have a complicated motion with a lot of details, first, write it down. Write your own version down.
Caught on the spot there.
Yeah.
No, I agree and I'm not used to doing this. If someone can come up with a simpler way that this is usually done, let's go for it or I'll do my best.
You're looking like you've got an idea, Steve. No? Okay.
We just want to do a simple motion that we definitely want to pursue this and we'll look into it and the board is in favor of further investigation. I could word it a little better.
Okay, well, let's have a motion that says we recommend that the board pursue ways and means for rooftop observation. And that's it. This says we're willing to investigate it. Doesn't say we'll approve it or disapprove it, we want to investigate it.
I'm a little confused. Aren't we here because that's already a direction?
Well, I was asked for a motion.
Well, it... I just wanted to make sure that we're all on that. I know we're here for that, to study the height extension, really, not necessarily the uses, I was under the impression. So I guess that could be all...
Say that again, you were in, under the impression, what?
Well, we're here to talk about extending the height and the uses of this. So I didn't know whether we need to just make a definitive baseline statement of that we would, we are all going to move forward with the attitude that we want to make this happen. So however that is stated, or if it doesn't need to be stated, if everyone believes that we're already there, that's fine with me. I want to give the public some confidence in moving forward, is what I'd like to do.
Well, I'm hearing, and they've heard, that we all are in agreement to pursue the investigation. This is an investigation, not a decision-making. We're investigating ways and means to do this right and if we can't find it, we won't do it. I mean, that's the way we've always operated. Okay, David?
I've got some, I've got a quick suggestion. I think we hear consensus from the board that this is something we want to pursue and we're very excited about it. That's awesome. That's the big first step. I think in order for, to help staff generate, what we are proposing is that we get direction from the board, we go off to our corner, work with Anthony, prepare an ordinance, bring an ordinance back to the board, draft ordinance, the board gets a chance to look at it and chew on it and do whatever it is you want to do with the ordinance, hopefully approve it at some point.
Before we start crafting ordinances, though, we need to craft approaches. What are we going to allow?
Agree.
What do we like in the first place?
Totally agree. And I think that really the direction that we need from the board in order for us to do our part of this is to focus on this slide right here that you have in front of you. And it kind of gives some options and some direction that we need as a staff on helping us craft some language. It's really more of a policy philosophical question on what does the board, how does the board want to approach this? Is it a permitted use with specific conditions that they have to meet? Is it going to be something that is approved by... Is it going to be something that is approved by the P and Z board or the Community Appearance Board at a public hearing? Is it, you know, there's a few options spelled out. So I think we just need, I, I think that's really what we need. It's just some, some policy direction from the board on, on how, how the, this, this will be approved and what will be approved. And then we can, we can take it from there and we can put together a lot of the, a lot of the nuts and bolts and details. But that's, that's some direction we need.
Give that direction, we want to hear more.
Yes, definitely.
All right. I'm going to go to the public now. You know, we had, I have a card here for, it's listed as public participation for non-conforming properties. We didn't, I didn't cover that correctly in the.
Yeah, we can, we can address that between, between items, if you want to do that between items.
Well, let's address it when we get down to the last part, reports in open, open discussion.
I just don't want to make them wait too long. I mean, if he's, are you, okay, never mind. Yeah, we can do it that way.
All right. Let's call that individual forward now and, and address it and we'll have done with it.
Reports and discussion. No, we can do reports and discussion works. If that's what you're suggesting, we can, we can wait until then.
Okay. Then it goes to reports and open discussion. All right, let's open with John Roweder, Roweder?
Yes, sir.
Did I say it right?
Yes, sir.
Come forward and tell us who you are, who you're associated with and go from there.
Absolutely. I'm John Roweder. I'm with Kaizen Companies. We are the developer of the Hyatt Place, which is at 9119 Ascot Boulevard, right in front of Country Inn there. We're also a part of Oliver Companies, which is the company that owns and operates the hotel behind it as well, which is the Country Inn and Suites there. And we are a developer of hotels and we operate hotels and multifamily buildings throughout the country. Kent Oliver is kind of the one who started the Oliver family endeavors. And he's been in the Titusville area since the eighties and he built that Country Inn and Suites in 2005, 2006-ish. And we've owned and operated that one ever since. They've always had the property out in front and they've finally wanted to move forward and build something else. So I do want to thank everyone for having this discussion and inviting me to be here and being a part of this discussion and figuring out how we move forward with this, if you decide to move forward with it. So we did start looking at the Hyatt Place right before COVID and started designing a building there on that parcel and then got put on hold for a couple of years. And during that development, we looked at the rooftop options as the ownership group has liked that idea. We have a couple of others in other places in the country. They're not on top of the building. They are lower. So we don't have the exact means that we've gone through in this process, trying to get to the answers we need. And especially with you folks in the past. So we're working through this as well. We did do our engineering for this building to include a rooftop observation deck. That's what we were looking at. And we've been talking with Kyle and David and the city for quite some time. And that is where we did run into the roadblock, I think, as Kyle had mentioned, the area of refuge. Because when we designed it, we were not intending to completely build a restaurant up there, build a bar up there. It was, it was kind of to take advantage of watching the rockets launch and things of that nature. As it's such a unique opportunity and focal point that we have here in this area. So that was our intent. And then also with that, maybe some shade structures and whatnot. So we've kind of designed our building to be able to incorporate that and hoping we can work forward with the city on, on such a thing that you approve an ordinance modification to allow for that overheight for those area of refuge and, and whatnot that may protrude above for sunshade or things of that nature. And I would like to comment on one thing that I have heard a lot of you folks mention is open to the public. And I, and I will say that our operation team is all for that as well. We definitely are. I think one of the challenges with dealing with hotel franchises for quite some time will be a whole nother bunch of hurdles we have to go through to get that approval from the franchise to open it. So that may delay getting that open. However, once again, we do want to get it open to the public. I'm not saying we do not want to do that. It would probably be another process we would have to work through. We do have all of those things as the board has brought up as far as key cards, things for our elevators so that we can control who can get off on what floors, there are key cards in the stairwells, things of that nature. So we've incorporated all those things. I think we've been trying to incorporate what we believed was going to be necessary from franchise, from the board, from the city. And we've been trying to work through those processes. And I'm not quite sure what questions you'd have for me, but I'd be glad to answer any of them or discuss anything further that we've been talking about.
Are you thinking about a structure that fits within the height limitations already? And you can still meet your obligation to provide the required number of rooms to be a hotel and stuff like that?
Yes, sir. So we, that was the challenge we had. We had to modify our building from what they call prototypical Hyatt Place to add rooms on the first floor to keep the 150 required rooms. But to do the observation deck, we are on the roof. So we would be with that area of refuge extending past our required height or the required height requirements in that area for the overlay district. So we would need this modification to go through allowing for the additional height for the area of refuge and any sunshade or any other coverings we want to put up there. Yes, sir.
So I'm just curious, what would you have in terms of ideas or recommendations of ways to go about facilitating this?
As far as how to compose an ordinance modification?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Well, yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking more structurally, you know, how, what? I, I don't even know how to ask the question. I.
Let it percolate awhile.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay. And Steve, you've got a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to get this out to the folks in the city and, and the board about an area of refuge. This is something I'm confronted with on a daily, a daily situation with plans. An area refuge is a place that's been identified by the engineer and agreed by the authority having jurisdiction. And it's actually pretty doggone simple. It's usually a point on a, a given point on a floor. And there's usually a dialer of type, for lack of a better description, that allows them to hit a button and say, hey, I'm up here. I need somebody to come get me. And that's what the area refuge basically boils down to. In the event that somebody doesn't respond to it at the front desk, it times out and it calls a monitoring service. And it identifies where they're at and the kind of help that they're going to need up there. So the area refuge is a pretty easy thing to solve. The biggest thing is, is to get your, the AHJ authority to, you know, identify that spot and, and agree with it. Typically it can be at a stairwell or can actually even be at an elevator lobby, which is, which is what I'm seeing a lot of on plans and stuff. So one other thing that, that I would be concerned of is the hurricane ratings and anything that you put up at that roof. If you're currently under construction, so you have the ability to do some things that other folks don't, that have existing structures out there. So that, that is of a concern of being able to bolt stuff down so it doesn't blow off. So.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, that's all I had.
Not ready yet.
Okay. Nothing wrong with that? How about you Nancy, to your, to your questions? We may come back to you. Have a seat and we'll.
I have a question. Oh, another question. When you're talking about the usage and it just being an observation, you guys see it as strictly an observation? Or are there any minimal services or what, what was the intent there?
It is our intent to have a beverage service up there, yes. We were incorporating basically a very small bar area that could serve alcoholic beverages and/or just water, sodas and whatnot.
Since you guys have done, is that what you typically find that when you have rooftop situation like that, that it really is more of a service? There, there's not a restaurant up there. It's, it's a, it's a bar that, that gives out drinks? And it's, it's not much more mechanically involved than that?
For our intensive purposes of our operations team, we don't really, we're not restaurateurs. So that isn't our, our expertise. We do have hotels that do have small, you know, diners in them and whatnot. But usually we lease those areas out when we have restaurants in our hotels. So for us, we thought that that would be a good option for beverages, being it's hot out. You're going to be hanging out up on that roof deck. You're waiting to watch a shuttle launch or just enjoying the view from up there of the port or the Banana River. We thought we'd try to incorporate something. Now, will that bar be operated all the time? Probably not. I think it will be certain times, certain events.
A key word, a key word here I want to plug in, event-oriented. It'd be an event-oriented type environment.
Yes, sir.
But while you were doing the analysis and the pro forma for this, being that it's not a, a large service, you still found that it was beneficial to do the uptick in, in cost of structure and all these other elements to make that worthwhile?
I, I can't say that I'm the one that crunched, trunched all the numbers, but our team did and they're the ones that thought. So it, it, I wouldn't say that it was strictly just the uptick from selling beverages and consumables. It's the actual ability to attract more people to your hotel with the ability to go onto that roof.
So that, so the extra cost was worth it?
Correct.
Whether it's a sunning, everyone goes up there to sun or to watch a launch or just to have a drink, it's worth it. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now we'll let you take a seat and we may come back to you. Uh, thank you. Let's see, next I have a card from McKibben, J.B. McKibben. Come forward. Tell us who you are, who you represent and share your ideas with us.
Evening, council members. So J.B. McKibben with McKibben Hospitality. We're a hundred-year-old family business that develops, owns and operates hotels throughout the southeast. So very excited to finally get to plan a flag in Cape Canaveral. Since I joined the family company six years ago, I've wanted to be in this market. Huge demand driver, you know, is the port, but for me SpaceX and what's happening at Kennedy is my generation's Apollo program. So it's incredibly exciting to be a part of it, a part of the activity. So we're developing the Hilton Garden Inn. And really, our program is a rooftop viewing platform. There's a small landing to keep our elevators dry, weather tight. And then really a corrugated steel platform on the roof with all the appropriate life safety provisions and egress means. But it's really pretty bare bones. And we've done quite a few rooftops that are very elevated, but based on the city's zoning, we did not want to put forward anything that was robust. It looked like a seventh floor of density. But something that's really pure amenity and to allow our guests to take, you know, participation in the really amazing things that are happening in Cape Canaveral while they're on their visit with us. So our ideas for operation is really, it's a ticketed event. That doesn't mean it's for charge, but basically we would have someone that stewards folks up for access control methodology. Rocket launch is not an incredibly long ordeal, depending unless they scrub the launch or they delay, delay, delay. But we'll likely have TVs on the lower floors so people know when we're getting into that launch window. And it's really to get up there, you see the launch and we put our robust F and B programming on our ground floor and outdoor space. And the idea is that that's where people will want to spend most of their time. But this gives them the opportunity to go up and get that great sightline view for the short moments that, that are the launch. For financial aspects, there really is no ROI in our pro forma. It is a pure amenity. If we had to take it out, it wouldn't kill our project. Fortunately, in my position, I get to do things that aren't totally profit-driven. We'll make enough money on the hotel and we have enough room in our budget to do something I think is really interesting and that our guests will be inspired by and appreciate the fact that we had that thoughtful touch. And, you know, that'll be their thought of Cape Canaveral and hopefully we'll have them back out for whatever may bring them to market to our property. So that's, that's it. And in a nutshell, happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. I don't, I'm not, I just want to be sure I'm understanding. Will this just be for launch events? In other words, it's not going to be something that people go up, can go up and watch the sunrise or the sunset? It's just going to be closed until there's a launch event or some other special event?
That's, that's correct. So really event-driven, really launch-driven. We've got a lot of equipment up on that rooftop. We really don't want people wandering around that unsupervised. Our regular guest and our elevator access control, you know, and stairwell controls, you're not going to be able to get up on that rooftop unless we've unlocked access. And in my mind, we have an employee that's up there when we're bringing people up and when we're taking people down. And then we're re-closing off access to that space. So it is very event-driven because we don't want people wandering up there and doing who knows what, just like we wouldn't let people on our roof in a typical hotel operation.
Right.
Okay, seeing nobody itching to ask another question, we'll ask you, have a seat and we may come back to you. And let's see, my next card is for LeWark Unit. That's another agenda item. Okay. Okay. Does anybody else want to talk about rooftop observation? Have a hand back there. Please come forward. We'll have you fill out a speaker card when you're done. Art, you can do it afterward. Go ahead and, yeah. I'll fill it out for you.
It's done.
All right, I know this guy. Go ahead, Art.
Thank you. I'm Arthur Berger, local guy. Been here 40 years. And my vision is a little different from the gentleman here. We're have been building in this city for 40 years. We last two years did 31 jobs with SpaceX. We built the HAT building with a curved roof, the one with the blue roof and the white columns. We did that renovation for Bill Mays. At the end of Imperial, we built those two buildings out there. And I'm just here representing myself. Right now, we're in the process of the, where the Thai Thai Restaurant is, renovating that building. I sat here for a year and you guys did approve the mixed use. We are submitting plans within the next two weeks to put 10 apartment buildings on the second floor. The first floor, we renovated and got approval, the Thai Thai Restaurant. We built the kitchen in such a way that we can handle a upstairs observation restaurant. Observe a bar and the whole bit. We have an office building. We got permits. Dave called me two weeks ago. Ensured that the permits, we're in the process of doing now is for a local kind of grocery store, coffee shop. You can come and put the balcony in the front, ride your bike, walk your dog, whatever. And that's in the midst right now. Our long-term plan is a five-year plan because we're not a big corporation and don't have endless funds. Is we are working on putting another plaza behind the building where we have the storage facility, which is the lay-down yard. Then we are planning and have already done some soil samples on a two-story parking garage over the entire complex, making all the fire codes and separations and everything. We've been working on that one. Then over top of that, we're putting two stories of condominiums or applying for it now that you've got the mixed use. Those are going to be pretty nice condominiums. The 10 apartment buildings, Thai Thai's already asked for two for the work and live. We redid the old straw hat where it's now the Ask Center, Training Center for the Port Authority. We're doing some more work we're presenting there. But on that one, the executives there or one of the managers that goes back and forth in Norway's asked, can I get a unit? Can I move in tomorrow? So it is doing what you were intending to work. We're also hoping the same thing on the last two floors. We're planning 38 condominiums. They all have nice balconies, swim and pool on the top deck. And also on the top deck on the south end, we'd like to do a really nice restaurant. Kind of, we want to tie it into Thai Thai. We're working with them. And exterior elevators around the perimeter on the parking lot, so we have plenty of parking. The fourth floor will probably be parking a lot for the owners that own the two condo sets. We also know that FAA just approved in Washington the battery helicopters. So we would like a little landing pad because they're going to be the future, the Jetsons, we kind of saw that. That's coming. I mean, like it or not, 20 years away, it's coming and people will be able to do that. The train's coming here. And people will be able to do that. The train's coming here. And we would like to have a really nice thing totally open to the park, public for entertainment. Question is the height, ceiling, one of the major issues you gentlemen are gonna have to deal with and ladies. You need some real heights. We don't need uh, the whole thing to go up to another sixteen feet. You need a high ceiling, twelve, fourteen feet, like your lobbies and stuff, your AC ducts. We've talked to FPNL, thanks Zach over there, and we've been looking at trying to get some panels for the ceiling top that are also enclosed so you have kind of a see-through type effect. And that's the plan that we have. And it's uh, honestly, it's gonna take me five years. I figure, and maybe seven. But that's what we envision in the city.
And nothing wrong with that. You can work as long as you want to, as long as, as long as they're within the code.
There you go. Well, we'd also like to put a garden up there with nice trees and just have a really nice top area. The pool though would strictly be for the people that own the condo.
I'm curious about the Ask building.
Yes.
Uh, is there any uh, notion in that organization to have a rooftop or observation? They're associated closely with the port. That might add in to what things they do.
That's one of the hardest jobs I had to do. That was the old straw hat that Will Nelson played and all kinds of stuff. There was so much smoke in that building, we had to gut it back down to the walls. We had to put escape suits on, pressure clean to what we did. Yes, to your answer, those people have vision and we'd love for Charlie Pennsy to sell us a lot beside. But they would like to do things and uh, they are working on a piece of equipment that we just started on the engineering because of the ship height, which is roughly the new ship coming in, uh, the MCS. I think it's two-hundred-and-forty-eight feet. And you can't get the lifeboats for the captains and everybody, so they're putting the escape chutes. And Ask has got to do the training. And we've got a piece of equipment that we're designing right now so they can go up and do those kind of drops. And they're also uh, when a helicopter falls in the water, I guess the wings propel and it twists over. We're looking at building that for them. And they want another building on the other side of the pool and they definitely want an observation. And they want it for their people. It's, that would be a private one.
Well, if we're clever, we'll craft an ordinance that allows the uh, rooftop utilizers to build it and manage it as they see fit. We, we've heard one uh, presenter that wanted to have a very simple uh, arrangement. Just go up, watch the launch, come back down and keep the uh, rooftop equipment undisturbed. That's a great approach, good approach. The other one is, has to have a full restaurant. Okay, we're, we're gonna hear that. So it looks to me like we'll uh, work with David and the staff to craft ordinance that accommodates these things and then you manage the way you want to manage it. Manage your franchise requirements, your uh, management requirements, your own personal requirements, business requirements. So, we're on our way.
The thing that we would like, or I would like, I guess if say it, is to have the upstairs to be able to be capsulated. And you know, not the entire upstairs, but to be able to sit down in a restaurant. The weather's nice, open the doors. When it's bad and stormy, still go up there, have a drink, have a nice dinner, see the port. The ship's coming in and out and the launches, I mean, it, it's phenomenal. You've got, we've got the best area and we've watched it grow. Even uh, the river and seeing things, you'll have all those views and just be able to go up there and have a drink or just go up there and have a nice dinner.
Okay, well, some people want to watch sunsets and some people, uh, as we heard, some managers, watch the launch, clear the decks, get out. And others want to have a, an amenity to use year-round. So we're, we're gonna keep talking.
And as far as it making money, I don't really know.
It's, it looks to me like an amenity that is desirable. Whether it makes money or not is just what happens. What else, Art? Anything? All right, anybody have any questions for Art? He's a great encyclopedia of uh, knowledge about building around here and uh, and, and new ideas. So, keep him in mind.
I had the pleasure of serving with Lamar for eight years in the board and got educated.
Okay, enough of that. Who else? Anybody else? All right. Now, I'm gonna hold these for the next topic. Anybody else want to talk about the rooftop? Anybody have any questions about further questions from these wonderfully informed people? Okay.
I just think it's obvious that this type of thing coming in is, is in demand. And these are just the few that have been lingering for a while. There's a lot more I think that would, will come along that will be equally as good as these or, or even better and more versatile. I'm glad to see this sort of thing generated.
Okay, now let's have a chat among ourselves, uh, open to the public of course, about what kind of uh, direction to give the staff and the approach we'd like them to take. I like this chart here that had adding the height of an elevator lobby, all that stuff you need as a permitted height exception. Uh, adding language to permit additional heights specifically for rooftop use with approval from whoever. And then leave the code as is, requiring developers to work within the existing land development regulations. That may be a way to go, or at least we'll, we can go down that road and see if it works for us. But leave the code as is and then we would implement uh, changes to accommodate the rooftop activities. I can see your gears turning, David or Kyle. What do you think of that approach?
The, the last one? So leave it as it is?
Leave the code as is, um, well, let's try it this way. Start out with the code as is, as your, as your sheet of paper you're gonna color on and see how that works. And then see what changes you gotta add to it or make.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll make a comment on that. I mean, we've, we've had five or six years of these guys trying to make the code work as is. And we don't, today we don't have any rooftop uses up there.
Right.
So, I think that informs us.
It's gonna be a code change.
Uh, and, right. I think that informs us that the code as it's currently written is not. Can they do it? Yeah, but they're gonna have to give up some, some of their half or a portion of their sixth floor to, 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 to rooms or so they're gonna be losing rooms. And we have a minimum requirement of a hundred and fifty. So, you know, something has to give. So, my own, that's my only point. Current code doesn't seem to want to facilitate rooftop uses.
I guess you've been educating the people that come in and talk to you about our uh, hard-nosed approach about the hundred and fifty rooms.
Yeah, that, that question usually comes up. Why a hundred and fifty and um?
Well, it comes very simply from five acres required and thirty units per acre permitted. Five times thirty is a hundred and fifty. And that says if you're gonna be a hotel, you gotta mean it. You gotta be a big boy and you gotta come in and have the pocket, deep pockets enough to build one and rent it. Because we don't want a whole bunch of small hotels coming in and turning into little uh, living, living arrangements later. We've already lived that life. We went through that twenty, thirty years ago. We're done with it. So that's where we are now. You gotta be a big boy and you gotta operate a nice facility. Uh, enough said. So you're gonna, um, I, I've said, I think I've summarized the approach that you want to start with. I'm gonna ask the board if they want to add anything to that.
I'm, I'm not sure that they can work with, with it without it making, extending or putting something in that we can go higher. I think, I think we need that. I don't see how it's, if they, if, if they do your way then, or the way we're talking about, then they're gonna lose rooms. And if they lose rooms, then we're not going to let them do it. So it's a, you know, I, I think the whole point of this really for me was, do we allow that exception? They're gonna have to comply with everything that we can think of. But I think we should, we should do that. Modifying that code.
I, I agree with that. I didn't mean to exclude. I didn't mean to be exclusionary.
I, I guess I'm saying.
Take the existing code as a starting point.
Right, but I, I.
See what we gotta change to get there.
I think, I, I guess in my mind, and I'm not saying I'm right, but in my mind, my, the premise is, we're gonna have to do it. So let's start working from the beginning with it. But there's people here that maybe would have a better idea than I.
Well, I, I mean, I'm looking at this picture and I have a question. And maybe somebody out here can help me. What I see there is a, a parapet wall that is dressed up a little bit and there's furniture out there and that kind of thing. My question is, is that parapet wall common? I mean, does that fit into your common design? Does that fit in to the height requirements and all that kind of thing? And so, what do we have to do? What has to be done to take that configuration and make it so that it can be used as um, a gathering place?
I'm gonna, I'll, I'll jump in first on this. I mean, you're not seeing the entire roof, obviously. You're just seeing.
I understand that and I don't know anything about that kind of stuff.
Seeing a portion of it. So what you're not seeing is probably the elevator.
Yep.
Um, the elevator uh, equipment and, and room and all of that other stuff. I'm sure that there's some type of an enclosure around the, 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 um, the elevator. There may or may not be a um, a bar. It may be enclosed. It may be enclosed partially. All of those spaces that I'm just describing are currently not allowed in our code.
So I, maybe you've been there. I've been to the Sky Bar up in Titusville.
Yes, on one.
And, and you're right. I mean, there's an elevator that goes up to that floor and it's, it's enclosed and shielded and all that kind of stuff. Uh, but basically, and there's a bar sitting back and all that kind of thing. But basically, the seating area is much like what we see right here.
Yes.
Uh, and I understand that, you know, mechanical stuff is gonna have to be considered and hidden and all that kind of stuff, but it's there anyway. I mean, the elevator has to come up above the top floor so the elevator car itself can get to the top floor, right? So, I mean, the shaft has to go up above the top floor. So that's already a consideration. Right? So what, what do we need to do to make all that pre-existing stuff fit?
Can we go back to that code section?
We have a, we have a draft in our package tonight that addresses what John just brought up. The, the appurtenances and protrusions above the height, that would be allowable. So those, that list has got to be worked through.
Yeah, I mean, right now you can see the bottom of that page. You can see what, how our code currently reads. And it says, it's limited. If, if it's intended for human occupancy, it can't, can't be there currently under our current code.
And we're looking at changing that.
And that would be the language. That would be the policy issue we would have to deal with. Is that human occupancy um, um, item.
And the associated changes that go with it.
Yeah, and Anthony, we'd have to work closely with Anthony in the, in the building department and the fire department because they all have their uh, respective hooks into this issue.
Requirements.
Yes, requirements. That's probably a better word. Um, and they have their own codes that they have to deal with and satisfy. So, um, um, yeah, they, they would all be very involved in coming up with this new language that we would be, bring back to the board um, at the end of the day. But uh, but this is uh, this is where we trip up, this language right here in front of you on the um, on, on.
Yeah, you'll have to draft some changed language.
Yeah.
Isolating that from, you know, sectioning things off or something. I don't know, but.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll have to, we'll, we would, I'm, I would imagine we would restrict the type of uses that would be going on up there if it's the board's interest to allow for, um, I'll call them gathering places or bars or restaurants or observation decks. I mean, the, the, we can, we can limit what, what is allowed and is not allowed on the uh, on, on, in these areas.
Well, we started out, the main driver was a launch observation from a high elevation. And you just operate from that principle. You, you don't have to be, go crazy about allowing everything in, under the sun up there. Some things maybe you're gonna look at and recommend, we don't go there.
That is, that is within the board's purview, yes.
Now, my next question is, um, you know, you've already got a lot on your plate with this uh, live work uh, that we're gonna a, a, address next. And, and, and of course refereeing the overlay district requirements that could continue to come. Have we added, is this a big, have we added a big load? Do you think this is a large, heavy load or to, to unravel this and turn it into a code?
I, I really don't think that this is going to take a lot of, of code revisions. I, I think it will be very straightforward.
You can create a draft and, and work with Anthony and, and get it, get it
Yeah.
to reviewable form and bring it to us. And uh, we can chew on it and send it back. Okay, we can swap it back and forth till we get it right.
Sure. I, I think my, my main question left unanswered is, what, what is the, the vehicle to get this approved? Is it a, um, do, are we going to, is the board, would you be comfortable with just having it as a permitted use? And um, if, if it was a permitted use, we would attach or we could possibly attach conditions that they would have to be, that would have to be met. So, all that would be required is to come in and get a permit and they go out and build it. They don't have to go to any hearings and all of that kind of stuff. That's one option. The other option would be, okay, anything above sixty-five feet um, is gonna have to come to this board. And this board has to review it, what's being proposed. Uh, there would be a public hearing. And um, you know, I'd have to, we'd have to work with Anthony if that would ultimately have to go to the council. I, you know, I'm not sure. But uh, but would there, I guess the, the, the choice is permitted by right or permitted through public hearings and approvals of a board and or council? That's, that's a, that's a policy question I would like to get some direction on from the board because that'll really help us as we're drafting this language.
Well, you've described pretty much the way we do business. We, we recommend code changes.
Mm-hmm.
We can make code changes. We can recommend them, get them approved. And then they become by right vehicles.
I mean, is.
Anything out of the ordinary, of course, has to go to the council for a special exception.
So, miss, I, I think what I heard you say Lamar is that at least the initial draft, you'd like to see it permitted by right and add some conditions. Is that, I, is that?
Anything out of the ordinary would have to come.
Something out of the ordinary would have to go to a board, a public hearing type of an approval process.
Well, we want to leave ourselves, and that is the way. We, we want to be able to take advantage of uh, good ideas that are brought forward by our smart people. It may be something we haven't thought of, they haven't thought of yet. They get to working with it. They see something that they want to try. So, yeah, let's leave ourselves a leeway to take things up to the council for a special exception.
Do we have a pretty good idea of hotel guys? If, if you're having to build the hundred and fifty-room hotel per our demands and you were to put an extra floor of whatever uses, but most likely observation bar, restaurant, what extra height are we talking? Do you have an idea of what that would be? Because that's really what we're talking about is what is that extra little bit above and beyond what we do normally?
That's a good question.
And what we would want to do is permit them the ability to do that, I guess, by right. So it's a simple procedure.
Stand by. Okay. You can take the floors you got and not have to put an extra floor on there to use the rooftop. You just add the engineering to change it for utilizing the rooftop.
Kind of the point I'm getting at is we're not really talking.
And then you allow the elevation shafts. We already have a list of stuff that can go above the uh, Stuff that can go above the, uh.
Yeah. Well, I, I think I'm just trying to make that point is, we're not talking about a whole lot extra here.
Yeah.
To get this done.
Yeah.
Which would make sense for it to be just a permitted use based on here's what
I think.
We're doing.
That's the simplest way to go. That, that's the way we like to wind up. But if we have to, as in the past, we'll take any good idea forward as a special exception.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody's really wanting to do something.
As, as I said earlier, if, if the board's decision is to allow this by right, what we would do is we would add, we'd come up with a list of proposed conditions or development restrictions or regulations, whatever you wanna call them.
Yeah, working with the community to get them acceptable to all of us so we can all live with it.
Right, right. And that would be one of them, definitely would be, hey, okay, it's sixty-five. You can go another fifteen feet. You can't go above fifteen feet, or whatever that number is for.
Whatever you have to do to be able to make that meet our codes.
If, if you have to, then that may be where, oh, you need to go to the board. Maybe. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
But something like that.
Okay, we'll drive it around and see what you get and bring it to us. And we'll have another good discussion and then invite our, uh, smart people to talk with us.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't the, the, the height restriction primarily, at, at least initially, set up for the sake of the beach?
Yes.
Not so much for the A-one-A overlay district, right?
Yes.
For the sake of the beach. Am I correct?
I have, according to Lamar's book.
That is the history. We, we have, the zoning, planning zoning board has always protected the beach line and the river line, river shore.
Right.
For the public, for, for the, uh, domicile livers.
Right.
Forty-five feet, so that everybody could have a fair shot at the shoreline, the beach amenities, shoreline, the river amenities, without having to fight through high rises. And people have asked us for years, how did you keep that in place? Well, we just did it. We zoned it forty-five feet along the shorelines. And then we have the sixty-five feet and the, whatever it is, in the overlay. Made provisions for it. Yeah, that's, that's the history for it.
Okay. So, I mean, that, that may not be as major a consideration in like the A-one-A overlay district, right? Cause it's not, we're not talking about beach
No.
or anything like that.
No. Now, it could be that somebody with forty-five feet of beach property, a beach property of forty-five feet height might wants to come in and see if they can get a rooftop amenity on the forty-five feet they have. And that's where the, uh.
Well, I mean, there's already restrictions there in terms of zoning.
You're right. And, and you can have, well, let's do it this way. Let's have them look at it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Tell us what the considerations would be.
Yeah.
We've, we've allowed, as a staff, we've allowed in certain situations, I call them widow's peaks, or whatever you wanna call them.
Widow walks.
Widow walks.
Widow walks, yeah.
Um, that, depending on what they want to enclose their roof with, um, oftentimes, we don't, we, the ones I can recall right off the top of my head, we've only allowed a real thin piece of cabling, several strands of it to kind of, um, uh, create a, a, you know, an area of.
Both they wanna have a parapet roof. They could use a parapet as the enclosure.
It, it's, my, my point is, it's been, you know, it's kinda been on a case-by-case basis, what the building department has been comfortable with. Cause we do have, we have some language in there that what is allowed above the, the max height. So, um, I'd like to ask Anthony if, um, he's heard enough tonight to work with staff to come up with some language for the board to, to consider at a, at, at a next, their next meeting or the subsequent meeting? Is there anything that, any gray areas that you'd like to flesh out a little bit, or are you, are you okay?
I mean, there's enough information in the agenda package. Entirely clear on is enclosed spaces. Cause what you presented is rooftop amenities. And the, the information in your package talks about roof, roof limitations on rooftop common rooms.
Yep.
And, you know, I think it's relatively straightforward to allow an amenity. You know, as long as they have to put the, obviously a four-foot, probably a four-foot barrier around the rooftop and then your amenity kinda is pretty much higher than that.
Mm-hmm.
So, there are amenities. Now, when you talk about the elevator, that's probably a separate category. But the rooftop enclosure looks more like another floor.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's another floor.
And, and fleshing that out a little bit, get a little bit of direction, I'm not saying.
I guess I'm not there. I don't see providing that, this amenity and then putting a roof over it. You've added another story.
Yeah.
You, you gamed us, and I don't like that. It, it's gotta be open air.
That's the sentiment of the board, going back and looking at it from the perspective of an amenity rather than enclosing the entire roof or substantial portion of the entire roof. That's, I think, talking two different, uh, ballgames.
Well, I think, uh, what we've given the board direction is, take the code as existed, add the amenity and the restrictions, and bring it to us. I don't see adding rooms or enclosed rooftops. I'm not there yet. Maybe we'll get there. I'm not there yet.
Well, the, the only enclosed area, correct me if you guys are viewing this differently, is the elevator lobby. And that's the.
Yeah, I guess what we need to.
It has to be.
Can we talk just a little bit about what enclosed means? I mean, is the, what is the board's sentiment towards a, a, an, a unenclosed roof structure, like a pergola? Or, um, something to that effect? I mean, is it, are, is, is the board saying, we don't want any structure, just open air? Is that, no, I'm getting some no shaking heads, so.
I, I don't think that's gonna solve it all for us. If we don't allow some sort of structure, it may not have to be like a fully typical extra-floor structure. But if there are construction methods that are, say there, there's, I mean, there's movable walls, there's see-through walls, there's, there's different types of construction that would allow for the elements. I mean, we're Florida. There's a lot of times that, and I think it was mentioned tonight, there's, there's, they want to have a little bit of a enclosure for a restaurant portion. So if a lot of people are sitting up there eating and a rain comes along, they can stay there. I don't think that that's pushing us too far if we allow possibly a certain percentage of this roof amenity area to have an enclosed usable space. I, I know, I know when developers come in, in these big mixed-use projects, and they look at this, they're not gonna say, I don't wanna sun, I, thanks for the little sun deck up there, but no, thank you. They're gonna want to see things, and I think our community wants to see these things. These are things that are really gonna expand the use for us locally to stay here to, to use things that are in our community and not have to go to other places. The better we make them, the more we get our community to stay here and do the things that we want them to do. Enjoy economically all these other things.
Then we've gamed another story.
We've gained a partial story, possibly. I don't see any problem with that. I mean, it's not visually blocking anyone. We're not going to huge heights. We've already allowed a certain structure, which is probably the most dominant structure on a roof, the elevator shafts,
Yeah.
to be there. If we allow some other light construction but hurricane-resistant structure to be up there to make it a better experience, I don't see that as a bad thing. I think we need to work through it, but, and it may be a certain percentage. We don't wanna, sure, you don't want a whole other covered roof floor. I wouldn't want that. Hell, most of, the, the best experience is to be out in the air. And I think that's what people want, but, you know, not everyone. My mother, at eighty-eight years old, with the wind blowing and stuff, and wants to go up there and, and see a, a rocket launch, would probably like to be inside a little enclosure.
Yeah, I, if, for what it's worth, my opinion is that, I, I think you wouldn't, you, you'd, you'd get a lot more use of it. I think it would be a lot more accepted if, if you had some degree of covering up there. Cause I've been in this Florida sun and it gets pretty hot. And so if you could have some, some, some type or some degree of covering, I, I think it would, I think it would make it much more of an amenity, um, than, than just a straight-up open-air thing, but.
And Dave, I, I agree with you.
You got the experts here. I, I, that's, that's just my, that's my opinion.
As nice as that rooftop looked, I would not wanna sit out there in the sun in July and August.
Yeah.
Give it three minutes. I, I think we have to consider some type of a structure to get under rain, sun. And I agree with you, maybe a percentage. But we're gonna have to, it, some enclosure if you're gonna allow them to put a, a restaurant.
I, I'm open. I'm open. I've changed my mind. I'm, I'm open to that. Have we, we've changed my mind with discussion. Uh, okay, I see those ideas and let's, let's explore them.
Okay, thank you.
I think we have a long way to go, but I think we're off to a good start.
Yeah.
I think there are a lot of new construction techniques out there these days.
Yeah, we got a skeleton we can build on.
A lot of new movable wall sort of things that they work with that I know are really popular these days.
There's a real good example already down in Cocoa Beach of what they've done. I think they called it Area One Forty-two or something like that. And they have built a, a bar on top of that. And, uh, it's not a fully enclosed structure. But what they were able to do was, they were able to bring their elevator up to that height, which, uh, allowed them to be able to do that. Now, they're close, huh?
It's reopened.
Yeah, somebody else, somebody else has got it. But my point is, is the city of Cocoa, of Cocoa Beach, uh, allowed this to take place. And they do have a, uh, type of structure over. It's not fully enclosed. But it, you know, like you said, gets the sun off of you. And it only meets the height of what's there already as far as the permanent structure, uh, service.
Okay, let's try it out. See what you come up with.
The other clarification that I would bring up is, I mean, we keep throwing around the word amenity. I mean, is this, and we've heard some speakers tonight talk about, um, these amenities kind of being a common area accessory used to, um, a hotel or an accessory use of the principal use. So are we discussing, or does the board wanna see this come back as an accessory use type? You, um, you know, enhancement to, to an existing building? Or are we talking about the possibility of a separate independent business operation occupying the roof?
I think this is gonna have any legs to it. For new structures and the mixed use, it's gotta be a permitted use. Something that says this is a restaurant, not just an amenity. Uh, maybe that can be identified in, in what you guys are gonna be bringing back to us, that there are, you know, um, and, I mean, a rooftop viewing area, what's the difference in the, the use of that or an amenity, calling it an amenity?
Top viewing area, I mean, we heard one speaker talk about a rooftop viewing area for their hotel. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that other members of the public could not use that amenity, but are we?
So it wouldn't, yeah.
I mean, so, and accessory uses are permitted. They're just related to the, you know.
Primary function.
Yeah, the main, the main use on the property. So, just, what are your thought, what's the board's thoughts about that? Clearly, as an accessory amenity used to, you know, a residential project, to a hotel, you know, the rooftop gardens, the bar, the lounges up on the rooftop, they're all generally related to the principal use. Now, when you talk about, you know, a restaurant, sure, the restaurant could be associated with a hotel. Or are we talking about, you know, an independent restaurant operating on a, on a rooftop? You know, the, the, the odds of that happening are probably not likely if you're gonna limit the amount of enclosed space. Um, to have like an independent operating restaurant on the top of a roof. Um, on the other hand, if you're not placing limitations on the enclosure, you could potentially have an independent restaurant. There'd be enough space.
I think, um, my opinion, if a lot of these things like that are gonna, we're gonna run into those in our mixed use, uh, where a developer comes in here with a lot of different components to his project. And if he's going to be within our codes, within our height, and he wants Joe, um, seafood restaurant guy to come in as one of his tenants, and he wants a rooftop, and, uh, he wants it enclosed, they stay within our, within our rules. And that becomes something that's identified as a, a permitted use within our codes and our limitations. If, if someone comes in and wants to use, uh, do the amenity package, which is a small percentage, like we've been mainly talking tonight, then I guess that has to be identified separately as a certain, and I think you are right. There's, there's a, the distinction needs to be made between a single user's amenities and, and accoutrements to their program versus a multi-tenant use building. So I guess we gotta dig into that. But we, what we're, whatever we're doing needs to go past just existing hotels and hotels. It's gonna have to carry itself if we want people to get interested pretty soon in these mixed-use projects. So I don't think I answered anything.
Good discussion, good discussion.
Add some additional thoughts to it. I mean, nothing, nothing under the code prohibits. I mean, if, if you have a mixed-use project and you wanted a six-floor restaurant.
You just do, you do it, yeah.
Just do it.
Yeah.
It's part of, you know, falls within the height limitation.
Mm-hmm.
What, what we're talking about is, is rooftop.
That extra, extras.
What extra on top of the roof is going to be permitted above the maximum height? I'm thinking like the maximum height is gonna be all enclosed space, right? And then what's the extra on the top?
That's a good, simple way to approach it.
My initial thought would be it would be an accessory use, and we would just, you know, how we treat other accessory uses if it's associated with the primary use or the, but I guess it doesn't have to be. Well, I don't know. Interesting.
I think we have enough to put something down on paper, but I think you're gonna have to further explore this cause I'm seeing what's in the package, most of what's being said by the speakers, with maybe one exception. And discussion of the board, I'm, I'm viewing this as what extra gets to go on the top of the maximum height allowed for a building. What is that extra? I mean, clearly, they, under the, under the code, you gotta have the elevator, right? So you're gonna have about fifteen feet, right? Cause the elevator's gotta be above the roof and, and, you know, it's gonna be at least the height of the elevator and beyond, right?
Right.
You're gonna need a wall. You're not gonna want, for safety purposes, not, so you're gonna need some extra height, four, five, six feet. I don't know what it is, but something has to be there to protect the people on the roof. All the seating stuff is, that's just furniture, right? Equipment. Have, are you gonna have a bar? I mean, I've, I've seen you're gonna have the height of the bar, or you're gonna have something behind it probably, right? Adding some panache? Liquor bottles up on the walls and stuff. I mean, those all seem additional items. Liquor bottles up on the walls and stuff? I mean, those all seem additional items above the height limitation? Right? Planters?
Yeah. What was the name of the bar up there on US 1?
Skybar. Oh, yeah, Skybar.
Yeah, that's kind of what I pictured.
Yeah, and, I mean, it didn't have to be food service, didn't have to be a restaurant up there, could, I mean, you could have food service up there without having a restaurant. You could have food brought up from the existing restaurant, yeah.
Enough to kind of go back and put something on paper.
I think that's a good idea. At least we'll have something to, to pick on, you know, and, and work with. Improve. That's a great idea. I like that. That's it. Well, with you folks, we're, are we, are we there for, for a draft? Get a good draft and look at it and prove it? Seems like the staff is satisfied with the directions given. Okay, I think we're ready to move to the next agenda item. So bring us a good draft when you're ready. And let us now move to item three on the agenda, a continued discussion for live where development regulations and provide staff direction. So, Val, over to you.
Yes, sir. Renee, can you go a couple slides in?
And thank you for coming, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And we hope to see you again, and we welcome you and your ideas.
All right. All right, so, if that wasn't complicated enough for you guys, now it's time to discuss the live work land development regulations that we started talking about in February. So just as a refresher, this stems from the mixed use, future land use category that was established. Policy LU 18B states that the city may adopt LDRs to allow live work units or live work space in commercial and industrial zoning districts, which allows a buildings or spaces within a building to be used jointly for commercial and residential purposes, where the residential use of the place, that's not pace, place, is complementary to the primary use as a place of work. So we, we started this discussion, and I believe we have some, some people here tonight to speak to this. And, and really, I think we want to focus on, in my research, I've found that there's been, you know, for 10 different cities, there's 10 different ways that they define what a live work unit is. So I think we really need to define what it is to Cape Canaveral, and then kind of build off, build off of that with, you know, different regulations, permitted use, you know, that, this is, it's gonna be a little more complicated. So we, I, I think we should start by kind of defining what live work means to us. At least that's how I think, if you guys have any other approach, that's obviously fine. But, yeah, this is my only slide. So, yeah, I, I mean, I really don't have too much outside of what's here. But if you guys want to discuss how you think of live work units, live work space, speak to some, some of the audience, whatever you see fit.
Okay. Uh, yeah, we've got a lot of muddling over to do with this one. I see, I'm looking down here, we need to define live work units, geographically limited beyond zoning classification. I don't understand that. Need to hear some more words about that.
I'm sorry, which part?
My feeling is that if you have live work, like that slide, you got businesses on the ground floor and living quarters above. And what, what are we talking about, geographically limited?
Um, I think I may be on a different slide. But so, so I, I mean, I think that's similar to the rooftop usage. Is it something that we want to, is that, which slide is that?
Okay, well, no, I'm looking at the, uh.
Rooftop.
Slide with the red building, red brick building in it.
Okay.
And then I'm looking at the summary that was provided by staff.
Okay.
And down at the bottom of it, where it have definitions or define live work. And I was just going through there, moiling out loud to stimulate a conversation. Define the approval process for a live work unit. Uh, okay.
I see, I'm, I'm following.
Haven't thought of that. I didn't realize we needed a, an approval process for it.
Well, you may not, that's if you.
You build, you build a building.
Yeah, I think that it could be as simple as.
It's gonna have business in the bottom and living quarters on the, so, okay, I mean, it's code.
Like, simple. Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's just adding it as a permitted use, that can be, that could be how we approach it.
That's the way I've always thought of it. I'm, I'm willing to hear your ideas. I, I think, I didn't realize it was that.
No, if we can keep it simple, let's, let's keep it simple.
Let's keep it simple. So number of live work units allowed on the property. Well, okay, that's a.
Yeah, so for example, I think Cocoa Beach looks at it as one unit above one storefront. So, you know, that's one approach.
So, as I'm looking at this picture right here, that red brick building, what I see on the ground floor is retail space. The second floor would be business space. And then the third and fourth, fourth floor could be residential, is that?
Yeah, I think they are. It says kind of to the right deck, access to flats above, so it must be British.
If I, if I understand correctly, the mixed use thing that's proposed anyway for A1A and Central.
Yes, yeah.
That's pretty much this, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, this is a pretty typical, I mean, this is, comes up quite a bit. This almost this exact type of, of setup.
And so the, the live areas would be above the business areas, right? But directly associated with those businesses, whether they're retail space or, you know, office space.
Right, yeah.
Okay. I, I mean, seems pretty simple to me. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I think the idea of live workspace has evolved quite a bit in the new animal that's out there. This is, is something that used to happen in urban situations where you owned the store below and you had your apartment above.
Right.
That's your classic. There's tons of examples of, of places that are successful these days, especially in areas where you want to create arts districts, things like that, within a special or an overlay district, or within the confines of a larger mixed use project. And those buildings these days are typically in the fashion of loft space, where you have an undefined business area and living space, to where you have an artist or you have a designer that comes in. And within that one space, you have both uses.
Yeah.
Now, what you run into there is, is by code, they have to follow and comply with commercial and residential codes. And those seem to be the more versatile spaces. If they want to transition later, there's the ability to, to separate them by structure and go to the classic way. But in these newer mixed use projects, I believe what's gonna come along is loft space, mixed with business, and, and you're gonna have that new animal that's gonna want to be there. So we may need to define where we want these to happen, and whether it's an old use that we have examples of around where there's a bar restaurant below and a, and a living space above. Can they be separate owners, or does it have to be an associated residential to the owner of the business? Things like that on smaller spaces, do we want that to be the, the classic version? Because there's already existing businesses below, but they were, they've been asking to have a residential component. So we may need to kind of break it down into what animals are there going to be out there, and in what areas are they going to, to be? I don't want to complicate it, but I think that's, you know, if, as a community, we want to really service the existing components, the existing owners, but have great ideas to help expand our community with an art or a market below and, and things like that. We want to, we want to help them, but we don't want to hinder ourselves by saying, well, you have to, you have to own this business and it's down below. And then do you walk, you walk outside and you go to your house, or do you walk within the space to go up to your place and you're the only one that can go there?
Yeah, I got you.
Which, which complicates your social life.
Right.
Things like that. But we do want to have the, the ability to have as many of these as possible to reduce commuter time.
Uh-huh.
To stay within our community, to, to use the other amenities that you've brought to the area. All those ideas, I think we need to really take our time and, and figure out where.
I agree.
Where those are, what they are.
But actually, what you're talking about is not a whole lot different than this.
It's a structure.
Yeah.
It's a modified structure to this. The concept is the same. How, how you, how you use it is, I'm an owner, I have a, I have a way that I want to live close to my business. In fact, I want to live in my business. Now, I don't, you know, I've got this building over here that's maybe three, four stories, that's gonna be part of a new mixed use. Maybe that is economically feasible to gut and create lofts for this type of thing, rather than it be divided. But that helps us bring a developer in and reduces costs on creating that element to this new project. These sort of things that could, could, we could benefit from.
Good ideas.
Mr. Chairman? Steve? I'm sorry, Dave. I've worked on a set of plans just recently, put in an estimate together, and it's similar to this structure that we're looking at, a little cartoon drawing. And what they did was, is first off, you don't have a common corridor in a structure like this.
Right.
So there's no way to move between the units. So the one I worked on had a staircase in each one of the commercial units downstairs that was accessible by a door that led up to their residence that would be on top. And actually, their residents occupied two more floors, just like we're seeing right here. So each one of those had their storefront, customers come in, separate set of doors. They had one door off to the side that opened up to their private staircase that went up to their, to their loft up there, went up to their suite and stuff. So just kind of wanted to add that in, you know. Obviously, there were other considerations to be made with fire and stuff like that, but that was the type of project I looked at. I thought it was very, very, very much represent what we think we might want to do here in our city.
So in that case, do the visitors have to go through the business to get upstairs?
That would be a separate door. There's actually, they actually had a third door. And, and so you had a front entrance, you had a rear entrance, and then you had another door over on the side that led directly to the residence that you didn't have to interface with the business. But also, that stairwell had a door that led into the business. So they could come down, not have to go out on the street and come into the front, they'd just come down the stairs and open that locked door and go into their commercial business there. But yeah, it's a good question. Yeah, they had that one additional door. So they don't even have to go through their business to get their residence.
There's a lot of ways to skin this gap. That's what architects are for. And I think our job would be to say, we allow this concept of live workspace, whether you want to live within the space and work within the space, bring me a nice plan that meets code, and I like it. I'll, I'll let you do it if it works in a, in a, in a way that fits what we want to see. If, if it's separated, fine, that's your project. You can live there, you can work there. You, you have defined it that way. You meet whatever codes. I think we're, we've got the other element of defining the, the way we're gonna deal with existing structure and existing non-compliant, uh, projects like this. Those may be on a, as a come basis or one by one basis. I don't know how we're gonna deal with that, but I think, uh.
It's gonna have to evolve.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, those are gonna be the touchy. That's why this is a, is a hard one to crack, because everyone has different demands. And you get a bunch of artists coming in here, they're gonna come up with all kinds of ideas of how they want to do this. But we do, I think we, as a community, want that vibrancy. We want them coming in with these new ideas. We want them to stay in our community. I want to walk down the street and get to that guy's place. And.
Oh, good ideas. And, you know, decide how you want to operate, run your business, live, all that stuff. And we act as the referee to make sure you meet code.
Yeah, yeah. Come up and blow us away with something cool in our town.
Go ahead, Steve.
So just wanted to put this out there. So businesses succeed and businesses fail and businesses move on. So this type of setup would be strictly rental. In other words, a person builds this building and then leases this out to this person, not only the residence and their work area. I don't perceive that as to being an individual owner for each one of these, because again, businesses start, businesses close. So I see this as a, as a, someone coming in, a developer, building it and setting it up, and then it all goes to like a rental type basis, you know?
Well, the sticky, the sticky wicket on this is, is when you do divide it like this. Because then you've got to somehow watch out for the guy that built the business down below, but the rental has nothing to do with it. It's just another rental space to offset his cost. So that's, that's where this becomes a difficult type of project to manage, because we, we don't want the mindset of, I'm a developer, I'm gonna do retail below, and I'm gonna fool these guys, and I'm gonna get six rental spaces, residential above it, by saying I've got tenants, or I've got workers that are gonna be there, when we have no way of regulating that. We're not property managers. So that, there, there are ways through the structure that help us regulate that by it being common space and it being multi-use space with residential, commercial, without it being divided. Those are things to think about. How do, how do we, how do we define that?
Why are we, I'm, I'm just trying to be devil's advocate.
Yeah, no, that's what we need on this, because it's.
Why are we limiting it to the owner of the commercial property that needs to live upstairs?
That's one of the, that's one of the questions.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't believe we need to do that, because, I mean, even if you've got your workers, you know, if somebody leaves, okay, now they've got this empty space to rent out, and if the neighbor next door or down the street can rent it out, why do we want to limit?
So does that mean, at this point, it's, we're, we're really misusing the, the term of live work.
It's, it's.
It's, it's, it's a project. It's a mixed use project.
Use, yeah.
And then it falls underneath that. So why are we worried about it?
I think the mixed use to me is very separate. The live work, if I remember right, and there's a couple of places back here, remember Dottie's Bar, it's Ellie Mae's now? They lived above that for. They lived above that forever.
They still live above it.
Nobody lives above there now. He died.
Yeah, since the fire, no, yeah.
But, and there's another lady that operates and she's, I think she's gone now, and this is what started it, where the VFW is, that strip mall in there. She campaigned to be able to live where she was working. And that's because what we're talking about here is mixed use. And to me, that's mixed use. I don't know what the, how you, how you separate them, but this was more or less geared for those local business folks in Cape Canaveral that had buildings and had businesses and they could accommodate living spaces within it. And that's how this started. Otherwise, it's mixed, to me, it's mixed use.
Yeah. Otherwise, it's all within one, one volume, and then it's truly live-work.
So...
So, we define it between those two. I'm sorry.
Are we talking about live-work because of the zoning restrictions? As opposed to mixed use?
So, yeah, we call it, called it live-work in our comprehensive plan update. And I think Nancy is correct. It's distinct from mixed use in the sense that it's kind of a...
That was the theory when we came up. Now, I'm not saying it should be, you know, but...
Sure. And that's kind of why it's, we've got to kind of nail down what we're, what we're looking for. But, yeah, I think it's that smaller, I guess you could call it mom and pop.
Yes.
Sort of.
Yeah.
I don't know if you call it mixed use, but that smaller, you know, residential, commercial mix. And again, I think the residential use is, is secondary to the commercial is a big part of it.
Even in our previous discussion, we were talking about, say, some of the restaurants being able to accommodate their staff who are very lowly paid. And then, we, you know, maybe having some places there, and then that opened up a whole other area because do you do dormitory? I mean, that's just, you know?
Yeah.
But this was basically, I thought, just for those folks that have a small business in our area that could accommodate a living space, and it would be a big help to them financially and travel and everything else. And some of them are doing it anyway.
So, are we saying we have, one component of this is an existing, potentially non-conforming, but it would fall within the new mixed-use idea? And then, there's the newer component that is the, the element that may be constructed in a viable lot along wherever that it's allowed. And then, the bigger projects. It's, it's the true live-work space in those.
Yeah, and even, you know, is it what we heard earlier when, when Art was talking or is it? I know, like you said, there's, there's some pre-existing ones like, I think it was Rocket Gym at one point or even Sassy Spoon, where it is that, you know, you walk out of your apartment, you can walk right into the, right into the place of business. So, that's kind of what we need to start with and then...
Art seemed to be talking about all of them.
Yeah, that is...
We may just have to see what he's coming up with there, and it's going to address all the different issues we're talking about.
Yeah, he said he's submitting plans soon, so I guess we'll see.
Yeah.
I fail to see why we differentiate between mixed use and live-work. It's all mixed use. Art?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Anthony?
Mr. Chairman, just to refresh everyone's memory, the two concepts are different. You have the mixed-use concept, the larger projects. We, the commission, council adopted the new mixed-use future land use designation, right? Under a mixed-use project, you can have that combination of residential uses and commercial. In addition, when the comp plan policy was adopted, we created this live-work concept to apply in the commercial and industrial areas. Prior to that, residential was not allowed in commercial and industrial. We introduced the live-work concept so there could be this, this building or space that can be used jointly for commercial and residential. If the board's not careful, what you're going to see, and undoubtedly would be my prediction, is that developers are going to come and say, well, now we have live-work, I'm going to do a residential project in a commercial and industrial area. And it's going to eat the, this rule of maintaining the commercial and industrial but introducing a joint residential and, and commercial use. So, your board needs to be careful when, when they consider. Because if somebody wants to do a true residential project, then apply for rezoning. Don't use the commercial and industrial zoning district for a residential project. Now, of course, we got the whole other issue with the legislature preempting, you know, the city zoning powers on live-local. That's a different issue, but this is intended to be a, a combination where somebody can, can engage in commercial activity and residential.
So, the more we define the space that they're allowed to build, the better we can regulate or curtail their attempt to make it a residential project primarily. Which, which is probably why around the nation, when people go into these industrial and commercial areas and do these live-work, they're primarily loft spaces because they're adapting the existing building which has greater space like that, and it's less expensive to divide it up into floors and they create these lofts. Now, if we, if we define this to where it has to be something like that in these commercial industrial areas to comply with our live-work, we're really, we're tying them up by code, I guess. How do, I don't know how we do that, but we tell them what the business has to be within the confines of the residential unit as well.
Well, now, we have defined, we have defined commercial area. We have defined industrial area. And in my mind, we were allowing mixed use and live-work in the overlay area only, only in the overlay.
I think that this live-work was to help address the, the places that are not in the overlay that want to do it or are doing that and...
The special exceptions.
With, with whatever exceptions that the city's got.
Come to the microphone, Art.
Partly because those locational requirements don't apply to these projects, and also the area requirement's a big one because mixed use, full mixed-use projects are on parcels, seven acres or more. So, but yeah, if we want to hear from Art, I know there's a couple of people here who have buildings that would be, would be impacted by this, so.
Do we think Art had some ideas that we need to...
Oh, I, I'm not sure.
Come to, to the microphone again, Art.
If I may, in the city, you have an ordinance that, in a residence, certain businesses you can run. Like, my license in my business, because of Kobic and everything else, I did a home office. An attorney can do it, an accountant can do it. So, in residential, you're basically allowing commercial. But in the small areas, not in the overlay district, and I think you've got mixed-use overlay as well as a 10-acre piece. If you have 10 acres, you can talk mixed use and get approval of special. But what you don't have is you don't have a live-work area for small businesses to be able to live and associate it with their business in commercial. The one thing that, again, thanks to Lamar, your A1A, the first block back in the whole city, is owned commercial. It has that option. That's why you have the rental places, that's why you have the city hall, that's why you have a lot of the police stations, everything else. That is commercial. So, someone that wanted a business there, a small business, and wanted to live there, which is basically, like you were saying with the studio types, you have nothing that I know of in the codes. And I believe that's what you were trying to introduce.
Right.
Is to let, are you going to make an ordinance or, as Anthony's saying, or is it going to get crammed down your throat by the legislation? That's my understanding, simply.
But I think Berger has the point about a live-work, if there, there is a residential structure in, right, non-conforming residential structure just off of A1A that's in a commercial zoning district. If the live-work is about providing that opportunity for someone to operate their business and live at the same location in a commercial zoning area in Cape Canaveral, then this live-work will provide that opportunity. But it's not for purposes of converting a commercial area, a commercially-zoned piece of property into an apartment complex.
Right.
With first, with, with one little component of commercial.
I, I thought, I might be wrong, but I thought this was really to help the folks that are in the situation now, not the new construction.
No, it could be some. It could be a new construction. It could be a commercial piece of property.
I wouldn't be against that, but I thought that was...
As long as it meets the intent and the language, you know, the building or space to be used jointly for commercial and residential where the residential use of the space is complementary to the primary use of the place of work is because we wanted to emphasize, we don't want to go back to the past where the city's commercial zoned property, through special exception, were turned into residential. Wanted to emphasize that the commercial district, the commercial use of that property stays to the forefront. It doesn't go away. It has to be complementary, the residential and the, and the commercial have to be complementary on a live-work opportunity. That make, it makes sense? I mean, I think, and I think that's what Mr. Berger here is saying too, on, there are those opportunities on that, on those commercially-zoned property just off of A, the frontage of A1A. Could become live-work spaces, commercially-zoned.
Where do we go from here?
It sounds like, it sounds to me like Anthony has at least a good start on the definition of what live-work is, right? And if we have, if we have, if we have a defined, if we have a definition of what live-work means, then we're better prepared to go ahead and talk about how to approve them. You know, is there a magic number of living spaces that you can have associated with, you know, that kind of thing? But it seems to me like the most important thing at this point is to come up with a rock-hard definition of what a live-work space is.
But now, isn't that what we already have on the screen here?
We could, yeah, I think that's a great foundation. And then, looking at some of the examples on the second attachment, they, they are pretty, I mean, they're very similar. So, just as an example, in Titusville, buildings or spaces within buildings that are jointly used for commercial and residential purposes, where the residential use is secondary or access, or accessory to the primary use of the place of work. So, I mean, that's, that's pretty much what our comp plan language says. And then, yeah, it's where, where we go from there. So, to use the Titusville as an example, they keep, they do keep it simple. They have, they define live-work units, and then they have them permitted in certain zoning districts by, by right in some cases or by special exception in some cases. And that's really it. They don't have a bunch of huge list of, you know, standards. They do discuss, you know, number and square footage, but you're right, Lamar, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be complicated. It can be, you know, pretty simple. But I mean, once we have that definition, we can, we can build off of that. And I think we have our definition for the most part.
It needs to probably be a little bit more, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Flesh it out a little bit.
If you look at, if you look at, like, you provided the attachment number two. If you look at West Melbourne in Orlando's...
Yeah.
...definitions, where, you know, West Melbourne refers to the, the portion of the structure that is used jointly for commercial and residential purposes, where the resident, owner, or tenant is responsible for the commercial activity performed. In Orlando, similarly, they use different language, but I think the intent is the same. The live-work unit must be occupied entirely by a single housekeeping unit. And tying commercial activity with the, with the resident and vice versa. That what we're trying to, the direction we're trying to go.
I have a speaker over here. Are you, Anthony?
No, I'm Adam Marari. This isn't actually what I'm here to speak about.
Okay, I've got a, I thought you wanted to say something. Go ahead.
I do. As far as definitions for live-work versus multi-use, the diagram you have is multi-use. It's not live-work. Live-work is exactly what Mr. Sharp is talking about, and that is where you live and work in the same space. There's no separation between your residence and the business itself. Mixed-use is what this diagram shows, a separation showing commercial units attached to residential units. It's just that simple. So, live-work is one space, multi-use is divided spaces.
Thank you.
So, if we require them to build these live-work spaces, and whatever that space is, it has to comply with both residential and commercial codes, wouldn't that typically guide the developer or owner to, to, to make this space kind of what we want it to be, live-work? Because they're, he's kind of forced into that commercial area. We're talking about commercial industrial areas that are, are going to be adapted with some residential component, but if we make that residential component also comply with the commercial codes, they're going to stay within our zone, that area that we want them to be. Does that make sense?
I think you're going to have to say some more words. I heard a lot of words.
Yeah.
And I listened carefully, but I didn't get there.
Well, I, I read something where...
While he's looking, I kind of liked the Cocoa Beach 2-36 where it's, it's a work-live unit, it's a single-dwelling unit in an attached building in a multifamily mixed-use or commercial building, where the predominant use of the unit is commercial. Because the predominant use of work-live unit is commercial, customary, "commercial impacts may take precedence over the quiet enjoyment expectation of residential neighbors." I mean, that kind of, I know when you have to live with both residential and commercial, you might have a little bit of conflict. So, they, they kind of split it in between the two different things, which was the most major. I think we want the commercial part of it to be the major because it's in the commercial district and industrial district, right?
Yeah. We're closer to work-live as Cocoa Beach defines it. So, yeah, this is, does anybody have any, any other thoughts as far as what direction we want to take it? Lamar, have you read the attachment two, some of these definitions? West, West Melbourne was pointed out as...
Which page is that on, Susan?
It's going to be, it's hard to, it'd be hard to tell. Just read it.
I can read it out, out to you as well if you'd like. So, "It's a structure or a portion of a structure that's used jointly for commercial and residential purposes, where the resident, owner, or tenant is responsible for the commercial activity performed." And then, they go on and they have some requirements in the definition, "where their commercial activity takes place subject to a valid business license, and where the living area occupies no more than one-third of the total floor area of the unit." That's the only definition I've seen that includes that floor area. That's the only definition I've seen that includes that floor area ratio.
Okay, I gotta go away and do some more thinking about this.
It's a little, yeah.
I, I'm suffering from data overload now.
No, I, I, I understand that too.
We, we drunk from the fire hose tonight. But that's okay, that's what we do, and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll unravel it.
Yeah, and so I'll, I'll try to make this research a little more robust, maybe, lay it out.
Out of curiosity, do you know what sub-districts live work units are permitted in Cocoa Beach? Cause the thing was it's only permitted in certain sub-districts.
I know that they, their downtown overlay permits them, but I, I'm not sure besides that offhand. Yeah, so I'll, I'll kind of come up maybe with some, some definitions that we, we could look at, and then we can work from there, so we don't have to struggle over that. And then bring that to you guys next time.
Anthony gave us a very good, said good words that define difference between mixed use and live work. And I heard them and I listened carefully, but I gotta go home now and sit down and look at sample. So I gotta do that, and I might want to have a conversation with Anthony to get him to. On what I want to learn better that way. But anyway, keep working and.
Yeah.
Good definition of live work.
Well, I'll, I'll expand this search, because there's, it's a very popular thing, like, like Danny was saying.
We don't want to miss a good thing.
But like I was saying, it's like, you know, twenty different cities, twenty different definitions.
Where I used to be, when, when we put in the, uh, overlay district, we gave ourselves the opportunity to have commercial and residential together. So the, uh, business owner could live with the business. The danger to it is it could turn into a residential set of apartments.
Right, right, like Anthony was saying, yeah.
I still don't know how we regu- regulate that.
Yeah.
What I'm running into is, is the way.
And also I believe someone, he owns this.
Could be a, and talk to us. I'm sorry, Anthony Graziano, seventy-nine hundred North Atlantic. Um, could you possibly grandfather in what's been done over the years? I know, you know, when you go back fifty, sixty years and someone puts a, an apartment above a restaurant or something to that effect. You know, it's done, it's, it's, it's been done, it's, you know, I'm from northern New Jersey, and we never had a, I never heard of a landwork unit, it was always a commercial residential mix, that's all it was. So, you know, I was saying if, if, you know, new construction you can always control through the board. But the old stuff, alright, so, I have a unit behind the Sassy Spoon Restaurant, I didn't put it there, I bought it. I wait, it's vacant, everyone knows it's vacant because they're trying to break into it like every day, you know, so, I, and I need also to, um, I'd like a designation from the city to designate the apartment, you know, as being up to code or recognized as an apartment. That way I can get insurance on it and on a residential, commercial mix. Because my insurance agent's saying, why is this thing vacant? I don't want to rent it, you know, because I want to be a good, you know, a good landlord.
We have around town units where, uh, proprietors live above the business.
Yes, sir.
Uh, there's a place up in, at the corner of, uh, Central and North Atlantic warehouses, many warehouses, and the owner lives above them. And we accommodated that, we went through some, some kind of, maybe it was a special exception, I forgot how we did it.
Sure.
But we accommodated that, and then the owner of another set of warehouses, uh, they live above those, we accommodated those, we found a way. And that's all I know to tell you, I don't remember the details. I'm getting older and older and, whatever, that my, new information pushes out the old.
I know, me too.
So, to answer your question though, we have, we have ways to accommodate, uh, stuff that's been grandfathered in or there's good logic for it, leaving it alone, or, or to make it so that we can all live with it, so.
Sure.
Just state your case and we'll work with it.
If you could help me, because, you know, I, there's been people in there that tried to burn the place down, you know, it's, it's, locks have been changed. And I know, I, like I said, I didn't build it, I know it's not, you know, it shouldn't, it shouldn't have been built the way it was, you know, from the, from the old owner or whatever, because, you know, I would have went through this board first before I would have done anything. Uh, but also I'd like to pursue that Airbnb is a commercial transaction. To me anyway, I mean, I'm in high-rise maintenance in Manhattan, that's what I do for a living. And, uh, you know, if you want to talk about commercial transactions, we have more commercial transactions going on in R123s all over America than we do in, in the, you know, in commercial areas, you know, so I, I, that's here or there, we could talk about that for ten hours, I, I understand, it's got nothing to do with my place or anything else. But I really would like to get a designation for that apartment from the city so I can get insurance on it, you know, on, you know, and not get dropped from insurance, because insurance in Florida here is hard enough to get for, you know, anything anymore. And I'd like to, you know, my, my tenants in the restaurant would rent that apartment from me. Or, you know, if you want to bring these apartments online too, it would be nice to have a, a long-term contract even for someone who's not using one of these apartments. You know, to have someone in the city who's gonna work in the city and say, well, we'll give you a six-month or over contract or a year, you know, a long-term contractual agreement. That way we can bring somebody's apartment online and, and you can tell, uh, people that, you know, Cape Canaveral has more apartments online instead of short-term rentals, you know, that's all. I, like I said, you know, we could talk about this for hours and everything else, but if you can help me out, I, I would really appreciate it about that apartment, because, like I said, there's so many people trying to break in there that I wish somebody would live there.
Okay, does he need to talk to you?
So, yeah, I was gonna say, I'm not familiar offhand with the properties Lamar was talking about, but I can give you a call tomorrow.
Sure, that, yeah, we've talked.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I'll do some research and give you a call.
Thank you so much, thank you, thank you to the board to help remake the city better, thank you.
Thank you, Carl, I'll see if you can work with him and fix that.
Yeah.
So not to belabor, but I think he, you own the buil- building?
I own the building, not the restaurant.
And the, and you have a tenant for the restaurant?
But also, you know, in the legal apartment too, like, you know, if, if my, my tenant, uh, wants, who wants the restaurant, was to rent it, let's say to their, you know, someone who is working there, you know, you need a contract for all this stuff, you know, because, you know how landlord tenant, you know, landlord has rights, tenants have rights, and I would like, you know, I would like to be more in control of that. You know what I'm saying, in other words, I don't want, you know, to say to them, well, you know, I'll rent you this apartment, I'll make out a lease with them. Whoever lives in there, I need to know names, I need to know who's paying what, you know, I have to have that, because I did do a lot of convictions up north, and as soon as you get into, you know, court, first thing in Jersey they want to see is a seal from your apartment. Otherwise a judge will not use, you know, here's the case. So I have to bring a seal, and now we have to start talking about how many people are living there who moved in, you know, and everything else, and it gets a little iffy area. I would just like to have it as a commercial residential mix and say, okay, well, this is an apartment, okay. Does someone in the city want to live in that apartment, do they want to live, you know, do my tenants want to live in that apartment, do their workers want to live in there? That's fine, I'll, I'll make out the contract, I'll, I'll deal with it, you know, that's where I would like to have.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so, to summarize then, Kyle, you're going to work more fully on that live work unit definition. We've got to be careful that we keep the commercial district, a commercial district, without it being gamed into residential. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay. And. Okay, I know what I need to do now, it's, I'll do that offline, I need to get more education. Is there anything else we need to do tonight?
There's, I have two more slides, but it's really just, because I, did everybody, I don't think everybody made the March twenty-seventh, um, joint workshop, but we haven't met since then, so I just did a very quick.
I didn't, I did not make that.
Looping back. So I won't, I won't belabor it too much, but the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council came and spoke to, to the public, the Planning and Zoning Board and the City Council just generally about green, uh, green stormwater infrastructure and low-impact development. And so here I just kind of touch on what they, what they spoke about specifically, Florida's development policy. And then a lot of stuff came up about Cape Canaveral's development and policies. So, um, elevating new developments, using structural elements versus fill, uh, pervious construction materials. Uh, we briefly discussed the parking requirements that we worked on with bars and restaurants and how that can decrease the amount of pavement in the city. Existing projects like the Veterans Memorial Park Rain Garden, the difference between regulations versus incentives. And the need to, most importantly, move quickly on a lot of this because it's looming. So, Renee, could you go to the?
I remember that, I made that up.
Yeah, I think you were there.
And that's where we decided that, if there's anything we need to do, we need to do it with regulations, incentives.
That was their, yeah, I believe that was one of their points.
We parked that aside.
Yeah, so, and then just a couple of things that we're working on since then and have been working on before then is the, of course, the Veterans Memorial Park uh, Rain Garden with that, with that grant. The Peril Flood Comprehensive Plan, um, updates are required by the state of Florida, and we are finally getting those together with the help of the, uh, Regional Planning Council. A lot of it's about concentrating population away from high flood hazard areas. It's, I would say, you know, kind of the gist of it, just trying to reduce the risk of flood and, and updating our comprehensive plan to reflect, to reflect that and allow us to make, you know, land development regulations and other policies that, kind of the stuff they were talking about, about low-impact development. Um, and then Lexi Miller mostly has been working on some impervious surface area, uh, land development regulations. Currently we have a maximum lot coverage, but lot coverage doesn't include, you know, driveways or, you know, it, it moves, it, it leaves out some very important impervious surface level stuff, so, we are working on getting that done, and, uh, that's really it, I just wanted to very briefly touch on that and let you guys know, you'll be seeing, uh, some of this coming up pretty shortly.
Well, it's business about, uh, drainage and stormwater, we, it's on another slide, but.
On the first slide?
We, we had a flood the other day in my neighborhood again.
Yeah.
Not a bad flood, but it, it flooded up and got in the driveways.
Yeah, it was bad.
Caused concern. I guess my, uh, concern, and I gotta work with this with another department, is to make sure all the lift stations work and that they have a steady, regular maintenance program and stuff like that. What I did out of that is I sat down with our, uh, I have a smart neighbor who's a good tinkerer, inventor, carpenter, anything you want it to be. And we figured out how to seal our doors against flood. So I've come up with a plan that I'm going to seal all the doors in my house up to a foot. And, uh, I have an air conditioner that sits on the bottom level, ground level, and the entrance in and out of the house, the ducts are ground level. So I'm figuring out how to build a dike around that that can be installed quickly and disassembled quickly.
Dutch engineering.
So, you can't, I can't move, you can't move harbor height, it's a flood area. But I'm figuring out how to seal up.
Alright, I like to hear it, it's the type of thing we need to do on a, like an individual level.
Anybody wants to talk to me, I'll share my ideas.
Thank you.
What else you got, Kyle?
I believe that's all I've got, I think, um, we have one last public participation about the non-conformities. Uh, Mr. Adam Marara, he submitted that card.
Yeah, I've got that here in his mer- is that?
If that's okay with you, if the board is ready to hear.
Say again?
Is the board okay with, with hearing that now?
Yeah, we, we had him wait the whole.
Yeah, we, we.
He said he didn't mind, he said he found it interesting.
Go, go ahead, you're Adam Marara?
Adam Marara, yes.
Okay.
So, thank you, I know we've been here for a while, so I appreciate your time, I'm gonna try and make it as brief as possible. Uh, I just want to speak to you guys, uh, about some of the issues facing non-conforming property owners right now. Uh, I was actually here last year, spoke to you guys last year about this. Uh, I didn't have any real-life examples to provide, but tonight I do, so I'd like to get into a little bit more detail and maybe give you guys a little direction. Like I said, my name's Adam Marara, I'm a resident of Cape Canaveral here for twenty-one years, I'm the owner of Florida Home Inspection Bureau, where the, we are a property inspection company, uh, for residential and commercial properties. I have owned the property at two twelve Adams Avenue since two thousand and four. Uh, that property was built in nineteen fifty-nine and is considered a non-conforming property like the majority of homes here in Cape Canaveral.
What's the address?
Two twelve Adams Avenue. Uh, I've spoken to city council members, I've spoken to staff members, uh, with the city, spoken to some of the members of this board here, and I hear repeatedly several goals of Cape Canaveral. Uh, those are to improve and beautification through low-impact development methods, uh, to keep families in Cape Canaveral, and to limit Airbnb and short-term rentals. Uh, unfortunately, what I'm finding is your blanket of residential zoning is actually preventing or severely inhibiting those goals. So, using my property as an example, it was built in fifty-nine, it's got a fifty-foot wide lot, six-foot setback to the east and a five-and-a-half foot setback to the west.
You, you're at two twelve Adams?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, current code requires a sixty-foot wide lot, which I can't make my own lot any larger, uh, with eight-foot setbacks. I also can't add any setbacks, uh, and it severely limits what I can do with that property. My family, when I bought that property, it was just me, I wasn't married, I didn't have kids, now I have a wife and two daughters, I've got one bathroom. So, I'm sure you guys can understand the predicament that that puts me in some mornings.
Can I get you to stand by a second? Anthony?
Didn't we do something for the fifty-foot wide lot, or lot owners in the Avon area to make their, uh, lots salable and conforming so they could get mortgages? We did something.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's what he's, this gentleman's talking about, but I don't recall.
Well, he's talking about non-conforming and I think we.
I know he's talking about non-conforming, I don't know what his point is yet.
Yeah, we're, okay.
Good comment.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir, for putting me back on the straight and narrow. Go ahead, Adam. I got, I got you before you made your point, go ahead.
No worries, uh, so, my family would like to improve the property by adding a second story. That's a low-impact method of development, as opposed to adding an addition, uh, or knocking the home down. Uh, we'd like to keep the home period correct, we'd like to keep the aesthetic of the neighborhood that we love. And that's what we would plan on doing by adding that ste- second story. With the city, I've worked with the city now for twelve, twelve to eighteen months, uh, going back and forth with Kyle, uh, Dave, and taking their suggestions to alter my plans, to try and come up with something that fits for the city code. Uh, I've altered it each time and come back to another hurdle to, to cross or to jump over and finally finding out that the plan, I mean, let me rewind here, so, I finally find a plan that doesn't expand the current footprint at all and doesn't expand any of the non-conforming features of my property, so my setbacks. Unfortunately, this has been an exercise in futility, all these changes, the back and forth and everything, because I've been informed now that due to the non-conforming status of my property and based on the current language of the city code, that I'm not allowed any expansion. Whether it is the footprint or to raise the, uh, vertical height of the property. And I'm also not allowed a variance, uh, for this situation is what I've been told. So, because the city code was written with apparently no foresight or consideration for these non-conforming properties, the city's denying myself and other non-conforming property owners an avenue. other nonconforming property owners an avenue of relief, which really goes against our property rights. As a Florida property owner, the state has a property owner's bill of rights. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with it, but right number seven is the right to relief of payment or compensation when a new law, rule, regulation, or ordinance of the state or political entity unfairly affects your property. So, where's the relief? Is it, is this fair? Is it fair to impose modern requirements to a home and lot that was zoned in 1959? Is it fair to govern the properties with planning and zoning that didn't take them into consideration at all? So, as an example, after 2004, the current Florida building code requires all windows and doors in new buildings to be impact rated or to be covered by an impact-rated system, shutters, impact-rated glass, et cetera. So, was my 1959 home required to retrofit, required to put in impact-rated windows, required to do shutters? No, no, it's not. The answer is no, it's not. Because they don't make older homes retrofit to conform current standards. It's just, it's because it just wouldn't be fair. So, this board should make recommendations to the city council to provide relief in the form of either a rubber-stamped variance for nonconforming property owners that are primary residents of this city, or the most preferable option would just be to add language to our code, similar to the city of Miami, that allows for expansion of nonconforming properties as long as the nonconforming features are not expanded, which would be the case for my expansion plans. So, without this relief, the only option most of us will have is to sell those properties, look to move out of the area, take our families somewhere where we can have a home that can accommodate us, sell them to that developer who's looking to knock down the homes, add as many units to that lot and to that property as possible that'll eventually become short-term rentals, Airbnbs, and push families out of Cape Canaveral, ruining the aesthetic of those neighborhoods, taking away those historic homes. That's what it's going to come down to, and that's what it's coming down to. That's what I'm facing right now, because I'm in a home that no longer works for my family. So, talk is cheap, and I understand that. So I put my application in to be in on the adjustment board, so I can help guide the city of Cape Canaveral to continued improvement. And what I challenge this board to do is to do the same thing. Take some action, help us out, please.
Thank you, Adam. By the way, are you, are you Ken to the Maradas of Wayne, New Jersey?
No, please.
Just a story.
Anthony?
Yep.
I think I remember now, this is a question, not a statement. Didn't we do some sort of fix for the 50, 50-foot lots so that when those people sold their lots, they weren't able to get mortgages because, new guy couldn't get a mortgage because his lot was nonconforming? Didn't we fix that so that you could get a mortgage on nonconforming? I don't know what we did. I got, it's a question. Maybe you need to go away and do some research.
Yeah, I know, um, nonconforming lot of records, we, we, the city adopted a provision about allowing, um, single-family dwellings and boxes to be rebuilt, I believe. Starting to?
No, it was about mortgages. People couldn't, the new guy, new owner, if you tried to sell the property, the new buyer couldn't get a mortgage because it was a nonconforming property. I thought we did a, some sort of legislative act to...
But it's not, I just can't recall.
I can't either.
Tonight, so, yeah.
It's a question. Can you do a little looking back?
Yeah, we can, we can do a little digging.
A little look back.
Look back, I'm not sure that's...
That's one question. The other question, and I'd just ask the board, maybe, maybe we ought to look at some sort of legislative act that would allow people to put a second story on their homes and, and larger living space. We... What, what is needed? If we do some sort of legislative act that allows lots that are 50, nonconforming lots, can we do that? Can we allow them to build a second story? Is that enlarging the nonconformity?
Yeah, the, the city has that, the traditional rule that many communities have that's rooted in zoning laws going back probably a century or more. Nonconforming structures cannot be enlarged, expanded, altered, right, to, to, to expand the, um, nonconforming nature of the structure? So, what I gathered from his comments is that he has a nonconforming structure. The law generally requires nonconforming structures to...
That's because it sits on a 50-foot lot.
Yeah.
Nonconforming lot.
Right, so...
The structure itself is, meets its setbacks, meets the existing setbacks.
I'm not sure I heard that or not.
It does meet the existing, it meets the existing frontage and rear, but not the east and west.
All right, so, I mean, it's a little bit of a can of worms, so theoretically, if you have a nonconforming structure, it doesn't comply with the setbacks, right, it's too close to, to the boundary of the property, so this gentleman would like to expand, right, by going higher, so...
Without meeting any other conforming...
Right, so, the question, you know, under the general principle in the, in the code, you can't enlarge a nonconforming structure. Now, you could do a tear-down and comply with all the setbacks and build two stories. In this particular case, you can't build on the nonconforming structure because it's encroaching into the setbacks. So he's, he's kind of stopped.
But I don't want to encroach on the setback.
Well, I mean, now you're arguing, now you're arguing, I'm trying to get the policy, I'm not debating. I'm trying to get to like, just generally the issue of dealing with nonconforming structures, right, you can't expand them, can't expand them up, you can't expand them wide, you just can't expand them.
So, the hope was...
The relief would be to adopt some sort of legislation that would somehow target allowing property owners to expand nonconforming structures. How you do that, I have no earthly idea, but I think that's his point.
As long as they stay within the...
You do it with special legislation.
You have to do it by special legislation.
For, for that area, that whole area down there is have all those 50-foot lots. The hope was that they would be sold off and combined into larger lots. What happens is they get sold off and somebody buys two lots, and it gets enough property to build three townhouses. You can put three townhouses on a 100-foot lot.
Wide.
And still meet setbacks, the present setback requirement. So, that's what's happening, the density increases. So, we, we really need to think about some sort of special legislation to fix that, allow those people to larger homes.
Well, this might be one of those sub-district or areas that need to be examined if they have those old 50-foot lots, that may, maybe there needs to be some sub-district policy.
Also, would entertain something like that.
As long as they're staying within the existing footprint of what they've been grandfathered into as a nonconforming lot, why would we care? Um, them going up, I don't see why we wouldn't allow something like that with a special exception.
Great question. It's a great question. I need, I need to speak to the council.
I just don't know if they would be on, on this. I mean, they're open, they're usually very open-minded to suggestions where they would land, I don't know.
They want to improve the community, and that'd be a way to improve that area, low-impact. Okay, now I'll, I'll see if I can get on council's calendar for a few seconds to get to think about that.
Bart? I ran into this, I ran into this twice in the city of Cape Canaveral. One right on Adams, I understand his situation. And other cities I work in, Cocoa, all the way down to Sebastian, what they have done is if it's nonconforming, that you cannot increase the nonconforming. So, as he's saying, if you're six-foot back and it's, the new code is eight, you can stay six, but you can't do anymore. You can't increase the nonconforming, but you can stay within the footprint of your nonconforming.
Didn't you go up?
Yes, they allow you to go up, and again, the overhangs and everything else. We have another one, Ridgewood, I'm meeting the lady on the sixth that wants, she's nonconforming, right on the corner of Lincoln, that one-story house there. She wants to do some work, and we were with the city and went through the whole thing, and we want to add in the back, but we can't, we got to go back to the new setups because of it, and they won't let us go up. And that, other cities have said, if it's nonconforming, you cannot increase the nonconforming footprint, but you can build up, and then stay back and you can't expand out into, into, increase the nonconforming. So, like his case, he can cut the walls, build a footer, put the second floor on, you're not changing anything, it's already nonconforming. But our city ordinance will not allow that.
Okay. We, we need to do some new thinking, that's all. We need that, we, what, what's really, oh, just so you know, they had a meeting this week, today. The Capeview School, it's in trouble. It, it may close because of Airbnb. The Airbnb concept keeps going towards rentals and not families, no children. No children, no school. So, it's, it's getting ready to think about closing because of, because of Airbnb. We were inundated with Airbnb and no kids, only rentals.
That's cool.
Capeview, our, our elementary school here at Cape Canaveral. Capeview Elementary, and it's, it's been here ever since we've been a city.
Yeah.
They've lost their title away.
So, anyway, just so you know.
It has like 300 kids.
What?
300 kids.
What about three other kids?
That's what a Capeview has, is about 300 kids.
Yeah.
That's all they have.
Yeah, we're running out. Thank you, legislature. I don't know anything else to add tonight, I'll get on to council.
Bart, you asked me to mention one thing because I had a question.
Yeah.
And it, it's kind of pertinent right now because it has to do with Airbnbs. If you remember, two years ago, we really worked that issue and back, and we had lots of people here and everything. One of the outcomes of that was the city was going to put in, they hired some group to establish a database, they were going to be tracking it, and I'd asked Dave maybe a year ago if he had any data from that, and he, he said they didn't have it yet, but, you know. And I'm thinking, especially like listening to this, my kid went to Capeview in the 90s.
My wife taught there for several years.
Yeah, and, and you, you know, you, I'm seeing, we're seeing it all over Cape Canaveral. Is that database working, or is there any data we could look at, and would it mean anything?
On Airbnb registration?
Yeah.
Uh, the city had hired a company and tracked Airbnb registrations, vacation rental registrations. That company abruptly closed their doors. The city hired a, a new company, and I believe their database has been populated now for a few months.
Yeah, it's called Deckard.
Deckard?
I can give you...
So, that information is available.
You know, I mean, we're, we're...
I mean, Kyle could get that information to you.
Yeah, I can get that for you.
Just out of curiosity.
Total registered Airbnbs.
Well, my question adds to hers, is that now that we've got the database, do we have some, who looks at it, and who, who does the enforcement? Do we have that solved? Does anybody in the city, who enforcement?
That would be code enforcement.
And Nancy, I was just told by, by Renee that that number is also given in our weekly update. And what, what did you say it was under?
If you receive our weekly updated report...
Well, I don't, but I can go find it. I'm sure it's on online.
Um, I believe you can also register to receive that. But it's under our, it goes by department, and it's under our department, under BTRs, and so you can see the short-term rentals, the long-term rentals, what type of businesses, so all those are...
Be interesting to look at and see if it's, I can see back where I live, every time something's on the market, we'll have investors come in lowballing and trying to pick them up. Sometimes it works, sometimes we have good citizens who hold out. But we're watching it change, so...
It doesn't give you specific addresses, it just tells you what type of BTR it is, and how many of that type of BTR.
I think we're kind of looking at like the overall picture.
Yeah, like trends.
You know, did this work good?
Right.
Um, did it not?
Yeah, I'll talk to the...
You know, I think the first company to me, they were just going to Airbnb and VRBO or whatever, you know. I don't think it mined, right, we had to mine stuff.
Yeah, from my understanding, this one's a lot, a lot better.
Right. So, they're looking at Craigslist, they're looking at want, you know, classifieds.
Yeah, Brian, Brian Palmer, code enforcement manager is the main, the main guy, so I'll talk to him and see, because yeah, if we get some, some data, that'd be cool to see.
Someone's looking at it. They made me change my windows out to comply with fire code for Egress and my, my home because of that.
From Deckard?
I don't know who it was, but...
That'd be code enforcement.
But...
Code enforcement.
Yeah, but weren't they informed by these, this consultant that there was an Airbnb there? I don't know. That's the only way they would find out.
Yeah.
So I assumed that the system was working, most to my dismay, but I did it.
More likely one of your neighbors weren't happy about something and they made a phone call.
Could be.
Well, this is the most informal meeting I have ever run in all my years of being here, so, but I think we accomplished a lot. I don't regret it, but I usually try to keep it tighter and moving along. We're almost nine o'clock, so we'll get out of here. Do better next time. Anything else? All right. Hearing nothing, I'm going to move that we adjourn.
I second the motion.
Thank you. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. We adjourn.